Let's go ahead and get this meeting started officially. It is 4:33, and we will then go into an executive meeting, and then we will be back to start the regular meeting at 5:30. But I do need to read the executive closed session statement so that we can go into executive. Executive session under the provision of government code Title V Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government Chapter 551, Open Meeting, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirements That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections: Section 551-0711A To Consult With An Attorney On Pending Or Contemplated Litigation, or B, A Settlement Offer Relating To At-Most Rates Under Rate-Review Mechanism Tariff; Section 551-0711A To Consult With Attorney On Pending Or Contemplated Litigation; B, Or A Settlement Offer To ACAP Health For Clinical Care Engineering Services For The City Health Insurance Program; Section 551-072 To Deliberate The Purchase, Exchange, Lease, Or Value Of Real Property For Hickory Water Supply Project Relating To Ford Ranch Located Within McCullough, Menard, And Concho Counties And The West Texas Water Partnership; Section 551-074A1 To Deliberate The Evaluation And Duties Of The City Manager. It is 5:34, I will now send us into executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Point of order to you right quick. I'd like to suggest and move to pull a couple items from the agenda, and one of them is from the executive session.
Okay.
And the first one is, well, not necessarily in the right order, but 551.074A1, deliberate the duties of the city manager. We've got two people absent, two council people, and I think that ought to be done by full council.
Very good point. Very good point. Then let's do pull 551-074A1, deliberate the evaluation duties of the city manager. We will place this one, please, ma'am, on the next agenda when we have a full council for consideration. Yes, sir.
And I have one or two more on the regular agenda. I don't know if you want to handle them now or later.
No, let's pull those when we get into that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Let us go to executive. It is 5:40, so we're not but 10 minutes late starting our meeting. We welcome each and every one of you here today. We knew that we had a nighttime meeting, we were going to have a full house, so we're glad you're here. Let's get this started. Tim Herbst, you come forward, please, and we will start with an invocation. We'll ask you to stand as we say our invocation.
How are you, sir?
Very well. Would you please pray with me?
Wondrous God, we give you thanks for this community and for these leaders that you have called into service. We ask that your spirit would be here now, Lord. You call us to pray for the welfare of the city where we find ourselves, and we pray tonight for the welfare of San Angelo. We pray, God, that as we look to the future with issues with water, with trust, with security, as we look for jobs, as we look for the future that you bring, that you might open up the eyes of all those who need to see the path, Lord. Help us, Lord, to follow you, to go in your ways. And we pray for the world beyond San Angelo as well, for we know that we are a part of a greater world. Be with all those who are far away, who are in harm's way. We give you thanks, God, for those that stand between us and danger. And we pray, Lord, that your spirit would descend upon us tonight, that we might truly meet here and be bonded together with your love, your fellowship, and most of all, your wisdom. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, buddy. And now, if I could have Zach Fleming come to the front. Zach is the son of Rodney Fleming, and he's going to lead us in our pledges tonight.
You'll start, Buddy Whip. (Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic For Which It stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Great job.
We do have a few proclamations this afternoon, or tonight. The first one will be Red Ribbon Week, and Mary A. Peyton, Prevention Coordinator, Alcohol Drug Abuse Council For The Concho Valley. If you would come forward, we will read this, and I will present it to you. Good evening. Come up here with me, and I'll read this, and when I get through, then y'all each get to make a speech and get some pictures taken. The proclamation is, whereas the Alcohol And Drug Abuse Council For The Concho Valley Prevention Team Provides Values To Health And Safety Of All Of Our Citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and is a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides, and whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts, and now therefore I, Dwayne Morrison, the mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 28 through November 1, 213, 2013, as National Red Ribbon Week, and ask for community support and encouragement of youth decisions to be drug-free by wearing red clothing, red ribbons, and replacing red ribbons on vehicles, homes, and businesses. Speech.
Thank you. I'm Paula Shell with the Alcohol And Drug Abuse Council For The Concho Valley, and on behalf of our agency and its team members that are here today, if you'll please stand, we just want to thank you, our community, for supporting Red Ribbon Week, and for city council for making this proclamation. Thank you, citizens of San Angelo, for making our community safe by keeping it drug-free, and we are always here to help in case you have any questions or concerns. And we do Red Ribbon Week every year in honor of Kiki Camarena, who gave his life, thinking that I'm just one person, but I can make a difference, and that is true for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all. All right. Zephron Temple Number 100, Daughters Of The Nile, Every Child A Gem Day, to be accepted by Mary McGlamery. They get pretty close. How are you today, ma'am?
Good, thank you.
Let me read this, and then you get to make your speech.
Okay.
It says, whereas the Daughters Of The Nile temples throughout the United States and Canada support the 22 Shriners Hospitals For Children, providing care for thousands of children regardless of their ability to pay, and whereas since 1924, the Daughters Of The Nile have contributed monetary gifts amounting to over $51 million for the treatment of children at Shriners Hospitals For Children, and whereas in fiscal year 2012, the Daughters Of The Nile Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit permanent endowment fund benefiting the Shriners Hospitals For Children, presented $1.7 million to philanthropic endeavors, and whereas the Daughters Of The Nile is celebrating its centennial birthday throughout 213, I therefore, Dwayne Morrison, mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the 26th day of October 2013 as Zephron Temple Number 100, Daughters Of The Nile, Every Child A Gem Day in San Angelo, Texas, and urge all citizens to support this charitable effort. Thank you, ma'am. (Applause).
Well, I think the proclamation really said it all. Daughters Of The Nile is turning 100 this year, and our sole purpose is to support the Shriners Hospital For Children so that no child will ever have to pay for medical care. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. We get to have a picture taken.
Oh, okay.
This is a high point for me. And now, we have Medical Assistance Recognition Week, to be accepted by Sandra Buchart, Medical Assisting Extratendship Coordinator, Career Services Coordinator, American Commercial College. Good evening. Did I get through it?
You did.
Let's read this one. It says, whereas medical assistants are multi-skilled allied health professionals who perform a wide range of administrative and clinical roles with skill, dedication, and loyalty, and whereas medical assistants are central figures in promoting and maintaining cooperative and successful relationships between patients and physicians, and whereas medical assistants are vital members of the healthcare delivery system, and whereas medical assistants make a substantial contribution to the quality of healthcare in the United States, now therefore I, Dwayne Morrison, mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 21 through 25 of 2013 as Medical Assistance Recognition Week, and encourage the community to recognize and support the vital services provided by medical assistants for the benefits of all citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And now, you get to make a speech.
We're grateful that we can be a part of the community and to provide the education for our students to start a new career and be a part of the medical community here in San Angelo. Thank you.
And now, we have some recognitions. We were in Austin last week at the TML convention, and there were, I don't know how many thousands of people there, but it was a huge auditorium, and there were gift, there were awards made in five categories for cities over 25,000. And of those five awards that were given in cities of over 25,000, San Angelo got two of them. We developed quite an attitude for the rest of the day, but we were in all cities of over 25,000, so we were dealing with some big groups out there, and we won it. We won two out of five. So first, I would like to have Bob Solis to come forward and introduce the group that spearheaded the Neighborhood Blitz, because this is the first award that we got, and I'm turning it over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Coming up, guys. Craig? Coming up. Come up front.
Come in here, sweetie. Thank you, buddy. Very well.
Mayor, on behalf of the city staff and all our partners here, we want to thank you for this recognition. It's always great to be recognized for one's efforts. I want to have a special thank you to the WTOS for providing manpower and helping us out with community outreach. I want to thank Habitat For Humanity for providing all the paint and some of the supplies. Thank you very much for that. A shout-out to the folks over at Goodfellow, and for the ASU football team for their participation. Go Rams! And last but not least, I want to thank the San Angelo Development Corporation for providing some of the funds to pay for some of the costs associated with it. It is truly a community effort, and it shows our community spirit. Thank you very much.
(Applause). Up there, just give a good look at some over here. Let's go here, guys. (Inaudible).
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I add something here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not taking anything away from any of these folks that are up here. Great bunch of people, and great effort, and a wonderful award, but I want to just take a moment and remember how it got started. And our former city manager's wife, Andrea Dominguez, was on a call with her husband to check out some stuff in the neighborhood, and told him he needed to be ashamed, he needed to do something. And Harold started the ball rolling with the staff, and Michael, and Rick, and Elizabeth Grine's staff, to make the contact and do the bus trip to pinpoint the areas, and the award is much appreciated by everyone, especially San Angelo.
I did speak, and Charlotte also spoke with Harold to congratulate him. He told me, hey, don't congratulate me, congratulate my wife. That was her idea, so. But anyway, they're very well aware of the recognition, and they're so appreciative, and they told me to say hello to all of you, too.
And next year, we will see cities all over state trying to do this, but we were first. And now, if AJ Fawer would come forward, we also, a second award that we won was because of our Aqua Squad and the work that these junior high children had done, and the presentations that they had made, and we were recognized for that as well. So I'll turn that over to AJ and let her explain that and bring those children out. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're very, very proud of this award, and there was a good deal of coordination and work that went into this. It's such an important educational opportunity. And as Kristy Uecker comes forward, she definitely deserves a lot of the commendation, her and the group of people that she's worked with on her Aqua Squad, and so I really think it's appropriate for you to come and say a little bit about this. We also have with us Tim Wolf from our stormwater department, Art Gonzalez, where's Art? Please stand up, you're part of this as well. Come on up. So, great project, very honored to receive an award of such a high caliber, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristy Uecker at this point with Ucra.
Only in San Angelo can we do awesome work like this with great partners, and I'm happy to say that in order to take care of our water quality along our beautiful Concho River, it means that each and every one of us do our part. And we can do all sorts of improvements, but if we as citizens don't see the importance and do our part, it's really, it doesn't really make a big difference in the end. So the education campaign is something that we do. It includes billboards and the things you get in your water bills, and it also includes all these wonderful people standing behind me. We did a great program with our youth, and as you know, they have great power, and these students behind me represent three of the four classes of Aqua Squad over the years, and I'd like to just mention them by name because they deserve it. They put in many hours over the summer and during the school year to make sure that our community knows about how important it is to take care of our most precious resource, our water. So I'm just going to mention them by name. They range from those that are in the current class to some even that are now in high school, and I have some that are now in college. Obviously, they're not here. I tried to get one here. I've got ones that are off, but I'll introduce them really quickly. This is Sophie Forbes, over here. Elizabeth Garabey. Scarlett Torres. Zoe Flores. Hava Yusef. Robbie Richardson. Wyatt Hayes. And if you can see them. Ryan Schwartz. John Chambers. Joe Navarro. And Ruby Shell. So I want to, please give them a round of applause. And I'd like to also recognize Tim Wolf, who is my partner in crime to make sure we do good things for our river and our waterways.
I'd just like to say that this really is a great honor for the city of San Angelo. We couldn't do it without our partnership with the Ucra. They do do the heavy lifting on it, but through them, we, as she said, we have multiple avenues. We try to reach people, and it is a great honor to win this.
That's all right, I get knocked off all the time.
And this last award, I really have a hard time making here, because this goes out to Tim Archuleta. Tim Archuleta has been at The Standard Times for 10 years, and he's leaving, I think he's going to Corpus Christi. Come forward, please, sir. And I really, on a personal note, I really hate to see him go. He has been very fair to me, he's been very honest with me, and he has been very unbiased in the reporting that he has done over the years. You've done a tremendous job with The Standard Times. I wish you all the luck in the world, but I really do hate to see you go. Thank you, Tim. You get to speak.
I want to thank everybody in the audience. I know that a lot of you folks are readers of The Standard Times, so I got to start by thanking you for picking up the paper, getting our apps, going to our websites. We are at a learning newsroom in San Angelo. We get a lot of young journalists, but we've always tried to look out for the best interest of the city and the best interest of our readers. I don't know if Jeff Deloche is in the house, but Jeff Deloche is the publisher, and he's always been a great partner in making sure that we have the resources to do what we needed to do in the newsroom. So I want to thank him. I want to thank the city and the staff. It's been an incredible time as I watch you all come together and advance the good for San Angelo. The 10 years that I've been here have been kind of a remarkable time. We finished the loop, we're working on our water problems, we're fixing our water lines, and a lot like the city council, you know, no one's perfect, and we make mistakes, but know that our hearts are in the right place and trying to do a good job. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you to my wife for putting up with me for 10 years. And my son was born here in San Angelo, so I have a permanent title of San Angelo.
Thank you very much. Best of luck, sir.
Thank you.
The next part, the next part of our agenda is the public comment section, and this is the time that we allow people that want to make comments or to approach the city or to ask for things, that this is your time. Now, I need to read the legal rules here, and then we will have an opportunity. The council takes public comments on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. On public hearing items, public input will be received on each item immediately following the council discussion and prior to any action on the item. Each member of the public shall make the remarks from the podium by stating their name. Remarks by each citizen will be limited to three to five minutes unless waived by a council member for speaking on that matter. No individual will be allowed to speak more than once on any one subject until every citizen wishing to comment has done so. I think tonight I will start it with the council, if there are any comments that needs to be made.
I have one.
You have one, Marty?
Yes.
And anyone else in the council that has anything after the council comments, and we will open it up to the public. Go ahead, Mr. Self.
Mayor, it's been questioned that my holding office is in violation of the city charter, and I am requesting that this be placed on the next regular council meeting in open session.
Mr. Maris, did you get that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No.
Any other council members wish to make a statement or speak about anything?
I believe I will. I would thank Mr. Self for putting this item on the agenda for the next council meeting. This is an important item. Every elected position in the United States has qualifications to run, and if you don't meet those qualifications, you cannot be elected and you cannot serve. I have not had a chance to talk to Mr. Self at this time, and I don't think it's my fault or his. This is not something that I relish, us having to go through. I didn't really run for office to go through stuff like this. I've been in tough lawsuits all of my life, for more than 40 years, both as an attorney and as a party, and I consider Mr. Self a very good individual. I helped him some on his campaign, but it has come to the attention of the public and the council that he is doing substantial work for the city of San Angelo.
Let's stop right there. He's already asked it be put on the agenda for the next meeting, and at the next meeting, when it's on the agenda, we will discuss it, but that's enough. We are out of order. Is there, at this time now, I will ask if anyone from the public has anything they want to speak about or to bring to the attention of the council? Just form a line. You got, you're on, three minutes, please, sir.
I'm on.
You're on. And I would ask that you identify yourself, you are on camera, identify yourself, and then you got three minutes. Yes?
Looking for the camera. Thank you for having an open session, and thank you very much for having an evening session. This is fantastic. Who'd have thought this many people that have shown up for a city council meeting? I'm Dr. James Phelps. I'm a professor at Angelo State University. I am not here representing the university. As a professor at Angelo State, I teach homeland security, emergency management, disaster preparedness, disaster response, terrorism, counterterrorism, and you name it, beyond that. I go to all kinds of meetings all over the country. I also happen to, besides living here in San Angelo, I have a second place up in Colorado, way up in Colorado. It's like a bunker. That county has 2,100 total in population and has a full-time emergency manager. I was just at a meeting in Boston where the city of Boston's emergency manager presented to us for over an hour the effects of having direct leadership, supervision, and response, and effective training in responding to the Boston Marathon bombings earlier this year. Interestingly enough, he was actually at scene when those bombs went off and realized the importance of pulling himself out of being a first responder and becoming the emergency manager and coordinating with the governor because, guess what? The city's mayor was locked up in a hospital for some other reason. And so having an effective emergency manager's key to ensuring that you can respond to various problems. San Angelo has had some very major drug busts recently, which indicates that there's a potential for major overflow violence, both from drug distributors as well as cartels into this far end of Texas. We already know that, those of us who teach these subjects down at the university. In addition to that, every single week, 24,000 pounds of extremely dangerous poisonous chemical is delivered downtown San Angelo through residential districts by truck every week. And yet, we don't have an emergency manager. The position has been open for nearly 10 months, and I'd just like the city council to find out what the delay is in hiring from the extremely well-qualified candidates. I have no vested interest in any of them. I know most of them, but I don't have an interest in who gets hired. I care about whether or not the city is able to effectively manage and respond to disasters, and I can tell you right now, we aren't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for your information, we are addressing that. I believe we're taking applications this week?
Actually, no, we already have the applicants, and we have, as far as the interview process, it's already, it's already in the process, but as far as to say that we're not prepared, we have some really good people on staff, you know, from our chief of police, our fire chief, we have a fire marshal, a lot of people that have a lot of training in this area, and rest assured, it's not as dire as you mentioned a while ago. We do have representation, good representation, and the position itself will be hired within the next two weeks.
And I agree with you, because they tell me that in case of a problem, it belongs to this guy right here, so really, I want somebody to pass the ball off to, so yeah, I'm very interested in this as well. I appreciate your comments, sir. Who's next?
Excuse me.
State your name. Barbara, and you have the floor, ma'am. Three minutes.
Barbara Pratt, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be real quick. I just want to thank all of city council- I just want to thank all of city council for these nighttime meetings and staff. I know you guys are not used to this, but I've been pushing for this for a year. And I'm your harshest critic, but when you guys do something right, I mean, this just warmed my heart when I read about it and heard about it. So, I just want to thank you all. And look at this turnout. It's great. Thanks, you guys.
And I might add that it's probably been two years since Barbara brought that to the attention of the council, and we discussed it, and we decided at that time not to go to nighttime meetings. But I think everyone on this council, when we were running for office this last time, every one of us said that we wanted to have meetings. So, we will have these occasionally when there's a controversial item or things that people are interested in. We will have these. So, I hope they're successful. I'm glad to see you all here. And I do need to make one comment I forgot to make. Don Vardman's wife, Don Vardman's mother died Sunday afternoon, and that's the reason that Don Vardman is not with us. Johnny Silva's brother-in-law's father died yesterday, the day before, and they're having the services tonight. And that's the reason that Mr. Silva's is not with us. So, the two empty chairs here are because of deaths in the family, and they simply couldn't make it. So, we need to excuse them and remember them as well. Who's next? Yes, ma'am. State your name, and you have the floor.
I'm Vera Kirkpatrick. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I live over in the Twin Oaks, Prestonwood area, and last session was on your agenda about a zoning change that's going to be possibly taking place in our neighborhood. So, we've been busy the last couple of weeks getting signatures. I have about 130 signatures on my petition, on our petition. I would like to give it to the secretary and ask her to make copies and give each of you one, so that you'll have time to look it over and realize that there are people in our area who prefer that we stay single-family dwellings, which we bought our property and Mr. Hewling bought his property, knowing that that's. So, we would appreciate you looking at those, and hopefully it will be on the agenda in November. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come forward, Brother C. State your name. You have the floor for three minutes.
Hopefully shorter than that. My name is Jerry C., and I'm one of the senior leaders of W T O S, Mr. Mayor, City Council, excuse me. I like to give credit where credit is due. You've done a wonderful job on 19th Street, seal-coding it, and the people in that area is loving it. I was out just the other day, while they were out there working, I was out checking on the people that's volunteering their part of their land for the sidewalk that you're going to put in. And I certainly appreciate that, and thank you. And by the way, thank God for the rain. While I was out there, one of the people from the other side of the street, and I heard it about that too, they don't like it because the sidewalk's going to be changed to the other side. But one of the citizens over there came all the way across the street and was very upset because on 19th Street, the school bus comes through there. And between 3:00 and 3:30, it stops on 19th Street to let those children off. And the people do not obey the school bus laws. They don't stop. They go totally around that school bus. They do not stop at all. And it's very dangerous, because if a kid get off of that bus and turn left and run across the street the way kids usually do, some fool coming through there is going to kill one of those children. I understand that a complaint was made once, and on the day of, and the first day of school, the police was out there one time. They wrote tickets. They haven't been present again. And it's happening again daily. People has come out of their houses and gone out there and screamed at people because they are speeding down that street while the school bus has stopped and the flashes are on and the stop sign is out on the left side, so that they are supposed to stop, but they're not stopping. Something has to be done about that. Something really has to be done about that, because that's endangering our kids. It's bad enough that during the summer, there's no marked crosswalks. And that's another thing. We need a marked crosswalk. It's a beautiful street. We appreciate that. And when the sidewalks are put in, it's going to look like a modern part of the city. But we need a marked crosswalk there where the school sign is. So, people that, they have to be living on Mars if they don't realize that they're in the school zone. And we need some police presence, not just for one day. If they do it every other day until people get used to the idea that if they run that stop sign when the kids are present, they're going to get a ticket. And I hope you give them the max. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Appreciate it. And thanks again for that blacktopping. We love it.
I did see Chief Tim Voskus in the audience earlier. So, Chief, did you hear that?
Sir.
I was talking to the Chief Voskus. Did you hear that, sir? We need some traffic patrol out on 19th Street to stop some of these drivers. He heard you, Jerry. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Rick Abbott, and I'm a member of the Lake Nazareth Homeowner Association.
Yes, sir.
I would request that you place item 22 under your consent agenda on your regular agenda for public discussion. Is there a possibility we can do that?
Now, ask that again, sir. What'd you say? I missed you.
Can we place that item under the regular agenda so we can have public comment on item 22 under your consent agenda?
Fleet. Okay. We'll talk about that in just a minute, and we will take that into consideration, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dave Durker. We're doing a lot of street work. And I don't build streets. I don't engineer them. I don't know about surfaces and what they cost, but I do a lot of driving on them. It seems like that the quality of the work is not what I would call up to par. I live in the bluffs. Driveways, according to the note we got, were supposed to have been swept. They weren't. There's loose gravel, which makes it very dangerous for two-wheel vehicles, which I spend a lot of time on, bicycles as well. So, I don't know why we're using this rock and tar thing. There are places where it's already worn the gravel off, and all we've got is just that shiny oil tar, whatever it is they put down. So, I don't know where that needs to go, but I would sure like to go back to real surface.
I've heard that complaint already. So, you're the second one I've heard that. Public Works, did you all hear that? You got it? Who else wants to address the council? This is your opportunity. Carl White.
Carl White, Parks and Recreation Director. I'll be brief, but I can't pass up this opportunity to mention and put a plug in for our Riverfest event that starts this Friday at 6:00 with a sculpture reveal at the Salmon Sculpture Garden. There's a free concert at the River Stage Friday night with several bands, including the Old Hat Band and the Texas Tornadoes. And then Saturday is full of activities and events, most of them free. The color run is first. That's a registered event. It starts at the Fort Concho, goes downtown along, around Santa Fe Park and along the river, and ends at the Paseo. That should be a great activity. There's a washer pitching tournament and a whole day full of activities, so we hope folks turn out for Riverfest. And 11:00 is the official dedication ceremony at Kids Kingdom Park. Thank you.
We'll see you there. Anyone else care? No one else?
Me.
This is your opportunity. If there's not any public comment further than Ms. Farmer?
Yes, I didn't have a comment a while ago, but I would, Mr. Mayor, like to register my opinion. I respect our city, took an oath to uphold the laws of the city and the charter. And I have a concern if we continue tonight. We only have five people tonight, and that's a quorum. And I would like to ask our attorney if she could render an opinion as to if there is indeed a question and if there is indeed an eligibility, we wouldn't have a quorum tonight, or how would the vote stand? I just need clarification.
Absolutely. There has been no factual determination as to disqualification. That would be council's decision, and that fact doesn't exist. It's very, it just doesn't exist. So, we don't have an issue on the votes today.
Thank you. So, registered.
All right. Yes, ready?
I'd like to ask that numbers 10 and 11 on the consent agenda also be pulled, and then also the item.
You want to pull 22?
Yes, 22. I do want all three of those.
Okay. Are there any other items on that to pull?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Please include number nine to go with 10 and 11.
Okay.
And some quick explanation on 14, 15, 16, and 17. If you pull those, it will only take a moment, I think, to explain, you know, for the public.
Anyone else?
And then the last thing I would like to ask, that numbers 26 and 27 be moved up towards the front.
All right.
There's a lot of people here for those items. I'd like to go ahead and do that first.
And I don't have a problem moving it. Marty, do you have a problem moving those? Marty, do you have a problem? Winky, okay. Okay, we will then move items 26 and 27 on the regular agenda. We will move it ahead of 25. So, we will start with item 26, then go to 27, then I suppose we'll drop back to 25. I don't see anything else on here that we need to bring forward. Does anyone else see anything of importance that needs to come ahead? Okay. Well, we'll go 26, 27, then 25 on the regular. And if someone would make me a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be items 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12, 13, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, if someone would make the motion to approve those items of consent that have not been pulled, then we'll vote on that, and then we'll move on to the next item.
I move that we accept those items as written.
Second.
Okay, I do have a motion. I do have a second to approve all of the consent agenda, and I'll read it one more time for clarification, Ms. Maris. The items that will be moved to the regular agenda, item number 9, number 10, number 11, number 14, 15, 16, 17, 22, and all other items will be under one vote in the consent agenda. Further discussion, council? Is there any discussion on these consent agendas from the public? If not, I have a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Put a 5-0 vote on that one, please, ma'am. Okay, let's now move to item number 9 on the consent, which we have pulled. This is consideration of awarding AP 113 to Royal Electric Incorporated for runway 321 High-Intensity Runway Lights H I R L Replacement Project in the amount of $179,920 at San Angelo Regional Airport and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents. Airport Director Louis Escabal. You're on, sir.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am.
Luis, my question on 9 and 10 both is, I simply wanted to point out for you to please tell the people that no general fund dollars are being used in this. They don't have the breakdown in the agenda, so they wouldn't know that. And I do want to point that out, that this money is not from the general fund.
On all three, 9, 10, and 11, no general fund will be spent on those projects.
And those were my questions on those items.
Okay.
Was that?
Well, that was one of my main questions also. Actually, that was my question.
The...
I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
I was in a different, I was in my happy place.
Just wanted to point out that there were no general fund dollars. And if we could move to 11, since Luis was up there, my question on that one was, here we have an amount not to exceed $114,400. And I would like for Mr. Valenzuela to give us the procedure that'll be in place to assure us that we will not exceed the $114,400 unless it comes back to council.
It's not going to exceed the $114,000. All the directors have been instructed to make sure they monitor each contract that they have to put in place. And they, at this point, the $114,400 falls under the responsibility of the current director standing in front of us. Also, along with our purchasing department, and there's a procedure in place to make sure that as soon as the amount is entered, the amount will not be exceeded, and those procedures are already in place.
The task order reflects that also.
Motion to approve items 9, 10, and 11 as presented. I'm sorry.
One more question. One of my constituents from my district asked that on this, on the amounts that are on here, is that for the construction also? It sounds like that it's just for the engineering and consulting.
That is...
For the construction also?
No, just for the engineering consulting. The project is extended beyond the original task order, and this is to extend the support from the engineer, the architects, and the multiple engineers that are supporting the construction. And for item 11, that's for the inspection of the project.
Okay. And that, but just to be clear, who is paying for that?
It's coming out of the airport fund, passenger facility charge, and the FAA.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Motion to approve items 9, 10, 11 as presented.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further council comment on this? Do we have any comments from the public on this? State your name, and you got the floor for three minutes.
My name is Lee Bell, and I'm just commenting as a citizen of San Angelo. That sounds awful high. It's a lot of money.
I agree with you. Lou, that sounds awful high.
It is, sir, and I have KSA engineers here to answer any questions that you may have regarding to the fees.
Was there a bid process involved in that?
The bid process was done in 2010. We have task orders from then on. We have a five-year contract with KSA engineers.
But this is a change order to, basically a change order to do more work than was on the original contract.
The original contract was, an original contract for five years with multiple task orders. So, each task order that comes up comes to city council if it's allowed. If it's below the limit, we don't have to take it. Would you like to hear from the engineer?
You all want to hear from the engineer?
No.
It is what it is.
Any further public comment or any further comment from the public? If not, I do have a motion, and I do have a second. I will call for the vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Put a 5-0 on that one. All right, let's move on now to items 14, 15, 16, 17. Do you also want to take these as a group, ma'am?
As a group.
Okay.
Aye. I just would like an explanation for myself as well to the public, is we omitted some healthcare items due to budget cuts and that were just one-years. I'm concerned if these are one-year type grants, and I read where one of them is not. We put something back in, the public gets to expecting services and stuff that is paid for or freebie out there, and then we take it away again. I'm not understanding how the process works, I guess, and I don't want to give a false hope to anyone out there in the public that we're reinstating something because of pressures of shutting down some things that we could no longer afford because there's no more money available from the government fund. Can you explain this to me?
Sure. The first one, number 14, which is the PHEP grant, we have been getting that grant for about the last 10 years. It only pays for salaries, and it's emergency planning basically for that. And number 15 is the RLSS. Though that particular grant pays for two environmental health sanitarians, we have been getting that one even farther, even before I got here, so probably even the last 15 years or so. And that has, it doesn't seem to be going away. It has been pretty level for the last probably 10 years. Both of those have been. The 16, which is the, okay, the 16, I'm sorry, that's the RLSS for the environmental health. 15, going back to that one. That is a, that one may go away. That one was supposed to be a one-year... That one was supposed to be a one-year fund of grant to pay for space of the nursing, space, basically, the lease of the nurses. We don't have a place for them to be right now, and so last year we were basically trying to figure out where we were going to place the nurses. Yes, we did mention that we were going to have to cut those two services, immunizations and STDs, and we had no space to put them in. So the state came in and said, here, we'll give you 20,000 if you will provide the one-day immunization clinic. So we still have the one-day immunization. I asked for an additional year, and they said, yes, that was fine. Now, this coming year, we have applied for the 1115 waivers, which is not here, but that will also help pay for the leased space. So if something happens to that 20,000, we should have funding to pay for space from the additional dollars that we are expecting this year.
And those that she's speaking of that are on here today are more of like a three-to-four-year grant process. And this is all stemming from council's challenge last year, as y'all were cutting services and reducing things. The challenge to Sandra was to see how we can creatively keep these services alive, and so that's what these are. And when she's talking about this 20,000, that was last year's Sandra's due diligence with the state in lobbying for those additional funds that other cities are getting and that we weren't.
Ms. Villanerio, what I'm trying to get across here is to the public by you speaking on this is, this is out of the council's control as to when these grants stop, and then we have to cease services because the city has no funds to fund the program. And it's not by our choice, it's above us where the money's come from.
And that is correct. And I want to say with a PHEP grant, I was hired under the PHEP grant when I came back, but I have always known that I can go away tomorrow because it's a grant. And so, I mean, anytime we, even with the 1115 waiver, which we're not talking about now, the nurse that we have in place, if that money goes away, they know that they are going away. So we make that very clear when anybody gets hired, and that's, I mean, yeah, that's the world we live in. Now, the environmental health grant, I will say that we do generate fees from the health permits, so I mean, that might be enough to at least have one health inspector. I sure would hate the city not having health inspectors. We've got over 500 food establishments, and so we'd have to figure out a way how to fund that. But this one, again, has been stable for relatively a good long time, and with the fees generated, that has maintained that particular division.
Motion to approve 14, 15, 16, and 17 as presented.
Second? I'll second it. Any further counsel consideration on this? Do we have any from the public like to comment on these four items? If not, we do have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Let's put a 5-0 on that one as well. All right, the next one we're going to deal with is item number 22. This is a second hearing and consideration of adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, Z1332 Fleet Equipment Leasing LLP, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, City of San Angelo, which said Exhibit A of Chapter 12 adopts zoning regulations, use districts and the zoning map in accordance with a comprehensive plan, but changing the zoning and classification of the following property to the wit and unaddressed attract of occupying 25.822 acres, tract located south of Red Bluff Road and Hillside Drive, more specifically, being 25.822 acres out of 93.314 acres of the Christoph Voits survey 181 Abstract 3931 and Carl Danman survey 180 Abstract 141 in far southwest San Angelo, the property described on a preliminary plat titled The Canals of Lake Nazworthy and occupies all of Block 6 and 7, changing the zoning classification from a ranch and estate to a single-family residential district, providing for severability and providing a penalty. Jeff Heinz, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you happen to have on this particular item.
I didn't have any questions, but I had a resident from my district that wanted us to pull this from them, so I'm going to ask him if he has a question to come up, because I'm actually in favor of this.
My name's Rick Abbott, and like I say, I'm a Lake Nazworthy resident. I'm just very concerned that the council has awarded a contract for 330 or 40,000, whatever it is, to Gateway Planning for a master plan of Lake Nazworthy, and we are supposed to go to public meeting next week for more public comment, and here we are changing the zoning on a piece of property at the lake that might have something to do with that study, and it appears to me we're getting the cart before the horse. I mean, in their plan, when they talked about work around the power plant, and that's where this is, they had a study. And I think that right now, when you must start making a decision on changing zoning on something, before you've even let the horse out of the cart, I think we're getting behind ourselves. So I would like you to consider putting this off until we do at least get that study and everybody agrees in public comment what we're going after, and not just go out here and start zoning things, changing zoning before we know what we're getting into.
Thank you, Rick. Rodney, would you like to address that? He's got a good point.
The thing that I would say about this is, if we're changing it to single-family residential, this could be changed to something that's much worse than that. So I, it is going to be changed, and I don't know, I'm not sure what he means by the study. The study's done, it's all done.
I'm also, Lee Bell, and I am a member of the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Association. And as far as the way I see this, it looks pretty good to me. Other thing is that I just don't think I understand enough about it at this time, and I would like to, you know, I wasn't in favor of the Gateway deal at all, but I would like to hear what they have to say about that area and what their suggestions was. I mean, we've paid for it, $365,000 for that deal. I mean, we ought to at least listen to it before we make a decision.
Thank you, sir.
Again, that's a, the Gateway study was suggestive things that should be going on out at the lake. Their, the owner of this property doesn't have to listen to or do anything that Gateway wants them to do. The owner of this property is asking us to change this zoning from the ranch to a single-family residential. I think that this, the change that he's had, and we've already gone through this one round, and we passed it.
This is second hearing.
This is the second hearing. I don't have any problem changing this to a single-family residential. If you guys had, if it was changing to a commercial of some sort, I would definitely would want to wait. But when they give this, they have the meeting, we got set up for October the, the 21st? Is it 21st?
Yes.
October the 21st, they're going to, they're going to show us their whole plan. They have a master plan of what we're going to do out there, and I'm not a fan of this plan, is, I'm not a fan of what we paid for this plan. I'll say that right off the bat. But this is a plan. This is not us telling the owners what they have to do. This was just a plan and suggestions of what they thought needed to be done out there, but the owners of the properties can all ask any zonings, and we can turn them down. We can either turn them down or approve them. I'm for this. I approve, I make, I move that we approve the zoning change as written.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, if you could explain to us the timeframe, the time limit, is there any delay? If, say, we waited till next, until we hear the 21st, that we put this on the next agenda, is there a time limit involved since it's a second hearing?
Right. Probably a better question for Ms. Ramirez. I'm not, you know, in terms of the zoning, once it's approved, it's there forever, but I'm not sure if there's a certain time between first and second readings you've got to have, though.
Don't you have a public notice requirement whenever you post these?
We do have public notice requirements for time before, you know, the mailouts go out, but AJ's probably got some good background on this, too.
The legal requirement is that we take action. That action could include tabling the item, if you'd like to do so.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with this either way. I think it's a good use of the property, but I'm just going to vote.
Why would we want to table this? This could be slowing, my only argument on this is, if I was an investor and I'm asking you to do this, I would like it to be done so I can move forward on it as soon as possible. Time is money on these deals.
Two weeks?
Motion has been made, is there a second? Is there a second on this?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. You're on, sir.
I'm Ted Logan, I'm also with the Lake Nazworthy Homeowners Association. I think our main concern is, is this property being divided into chunks? We have 96 acres, basically, over there. Are we going to take 26 acres, then 15 acres, and then 20 acres and bring them through for approval for new zoning? And we, to me, we really haven't, have we discussed the sewer capacity of this area? What are we going to do? Red Bluff's been struggling forever. Here, we're adding a zoning going to residential, more sewer. What are we doing about the runoff? Have we addressed all the issues over there? We've got a traffic problem coming off Red Bluff. Are we going to put in a light? I don't know that we've addressed all the issues, you know, to go to zoning change at this point.
But those issues will be brought up before they do any construction.
Okay. Well, that's our main concern. I mean, you know, residential, yes, that's probably one of the best uses.
Yes.
But, you know, we're just concerned about all the issues. We don't want more runoff going into this lake, and we want services to be adequate to handle it before we go on and zone it or approve it, so.
The only thing I'm worried about is if you came to me and you had a ranch out there and you wanted to put in houses out there, and it wasn't going to impact, I would want you to be able to do that as a landowner. If that's, if, and we've already agreed, this council's already passed, or already voted on this once and already said that it was going to happen.
Is this, I mean, this property has been sold?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, see, I wasn't even aware it was fully under contract. I thought it was being appropriated and looked at by somebody that might purchase it, but it's actually under full contract.
That's my understanding. It's already, yeah, they own it.
AJ, please.
We are not notified as city staff whenever property transactions take place, but what I can tell you is that it is under private ownership, it's not a city-owned parcel. And so when a private property owner files an application for zoning, by law, we are required to put it in the docket and schedule it. But again, you only have to take action on it, whether that would be an approval, a denial, or a tabling.
Thank you, Ted. Mr. Bastardo.
My name is Richard Bastardo. I don't live in this district, mayor. I know it's inside the city limits. And I've heard these three men before me at this podium, and they're absolutely correct. Mr. Abbott, for example, you're putting that cart for that horse. I'm a former planning commissioner. I don't know of anybody up here that's ever come on an elected basis to those seats that you all occupy with planning commission experience. Now, I don't hold it against you, don't take offense to that, okay? But the last gentleman that was here, which I don't know, I really don't, he's correct. You want to take and change the zoning from E, from RE Ranch and Estate to single-family residence before you cover the area when it comes to new infrastructure, water, delivery of water, you people are in the business of selling water, and we, the public, buy it. And then the infrastructure, when it comes to the sewer, new infrastructure being hooked up to old infrastructure, I recommend you, sir, table this, because this lady that came up here first, okay, has signatures on a petition against it.
No, that's not, that's not...
Okay, that's not it? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm not correct. But here's the thing. Here's the thing. You're making decisions, okay? You want to take a vote on it, and you have people coming to the podium opposing, okay? Opposing that you all today, besides discussing it, take possible action. I don't agree with it, it's not good. We have an old infrastructure underground as we speak, and here y'all are going to tie up new stuff to old stuff. I was accused of holding up the industrial park. I went ahead and voted for it, even though I didn't want to. The citizens of San Angelo wanted it. They looked at it as a valuable asset, and I voted for it, but it just sits out there collecting dust, and all the infrastructure was put in. Former planning director, David Thurbin, okay, agreed with me at the podium that it was not the right thing to do. Put the infrastructure in as people want to line up and come in. No, they went ahead and did it. Only had one outfit move out there. We don't get a lot of rain out here, but when we do, we get some areas flooded. Well, that building over there, that house, the news photo, got flooded. It took $50,000 of our money, some of it's mine, to go in there and fix that. Y'all think about it. I'm going to tell you one more thing, and I'll get out of here. When I was sitting on that city council in that chair right there, Rick Abbott, I didn't know him, he came to the podium just like today, and he sued me up. I didn't hold it against him. He had a right to come up here, but after he was finished at the podium, and it was my turn to speak into that microphone, by God, I did. And Mr. Abbott, would you do me a favor, sir, and stand up for me, please? Do I hold a vendetta against that man for suing me? No, sir, it was business. I was conducting city business, and he was here vouching his opinion. Okay? Later, later, he and I talked, and we're good friends.
Thank you, sir.
Wait, now, can I talk to you?
Yes, you bet.
Now, I've seen this plan that everybody's going to see on, every one of us have seen this plan, and what they're asking for is what he's asking for. It's in the plan that way. That's why we've all seen it.
Okay, I hear you, loud and clear.
So you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, exactly.
That the Gateway Plan calls for that, am I correct on that? AJ, am I correct on that?
I understand.
So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm not trying to be, I'm sitting here saying that the Gateway Plan is, their, their master plan that they had, their suggestion was that this was to be single-family residential. So if they're going to build, if they're going to build those houses there anyways, and we've already looked at it once, and we said, and all of us were here, I believe, on the first vote that we took, all of us said that that was, it was unanimous that we were going to do that, because we've looked at the plan. So that's where I'm coming from for you and the general public. I've seen the plan, I've gone over the plan extensively on that, and this is something that fits within what the plan is talking about. That's where I'm coming from. And as far as adding the infrastructure on the, on the industrial park like you were talking about, we as a city did that. This builder is going to have to put in that infrastructure themselves. And so then, when we get to, I think Ted brought this up, as far as runoff and things like that, we'll definitely have to, have to look at those things and take care of those things as it comes. So I'm not trying to be difficult, and I'm, I don't think that we're putting the cart before, before the horse on this deal, and I'll pull it, but I, I just don't think it's fair to the owner that the plan has it this way and they want it that way. That's where I'm coming from on this, okay? You understand?
We've already got a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, I understand, mayor, but you didn't put a time limit on me. You blew it. So don't you.
No, he said three minutes before all.
No, not when I walked up. He didn't do it to this African-American here. Oh, sorry, Bob. I'll do like Millie Holden did one time.
Mr. Bastardo, when I first opened the meeting, I read the remarks, and I said...
When I came up here, you didn't continue the time limit. Okay? So I asked, I asked for you to take consensus of the council, give me that chance.
Would the council like for Mr. Bastardo to be through?
I appreciate your opinion, and I'm definitely looking at that, but let's just be civil on this deal, and let us vote. And actually, I have no idea, there's only five of us, so it may not make it anyways.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Bastardo, I did read at the first of the meeting, three to five minutes. You have exceeded your minutes.
You didn't give me a choice between three or five. You didn't do it! You blew it! I'm sorry, sir, you blew it. You better understand one thing, I come from a minority group of people in this country, and don't you dare violate my rights. Don't you dare do it!
Sir, don't even start there.
No, no, don't do that!
You know that you're out of line.
Okay, I call for a point of order right here.
Mr. Bastardo, you are out of order, sir, and I'm asking you to sit down.
I'm calling for a point of order, didn't you hear me?
You are out of order, I'm asking you to sit down. You've had your five, over five, you've made your statement, you've had it, now please sit down.
Is anybody else on the council want me to hush and go sit down? Does anybody else on the council want me to hush and go sit down?
I'll second that.
I want you to sit down.
We're gonna get out of here, Richard. That's enough.
Marty?
I agree.
Charlie, that's five votes. Chuck, Mr. Bastardo, you need to sit down. There has been a motion made. It has been seconded. We will take a vote. If the vote fails, then I will ask for a second motion, which may be to table this until another time. But the motion has been made. It has been seconded. And we will take a vote on it this time. Any other further public comment? If not, I'm gonna call for the motion. And the motion is to allow this to go from ranching estates to single-family residence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold up hands. That's five votes. It has gone to RS1. I believe that this will take care of our consent agenda. How about a break?
Thank you.
Let's take a few minutes. It is 7:09 and time to bring this meeting back to order. I did make a mistake when I was going through this because in Section E Follow-Up and Administrative Issues, we had consideration of matters in executive. And we also had a presentation by David Toomey of ACAP Health. Now, we have already voted to go ahead and allow 26 and 27 to be next, followed by 25. I want to ask the council on this, give me a consensus. Do you wanna go ahead and move back and pick up this follow-up? Or do you wanna put him after 25, 26, and 27? I told him he could have five minutes.
He can go ahead and go.
Go ahead and... All right with you, Marty? Winky?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, well, let's back up again one more time. And let's go back up to Number E, which is consideration and possible action on matters discussed in executive closed session if needed. And we have the presentation by David Toomey of ACAP Health, which deals with this. And you got five minutes, sir.
Five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm making that plane now.
I am pleased to be here today. My name is David Toomey. And I've been in the marketplace in the city of San Angelo several times. And I met with the council on May 15. I got engaged with the city, and I got a presentation up here in August of 2011 and September of 2011 to help you with your healthcare cost challenges. The city council charged the city manager at the time to lower healthcare costs, maintain benefits, no increase in employee funding. Your health risks are declining. I was brought in to help solve the healthcare challenges. And their charge was, once again, don't increase costs, maintain benefits, and don't put more pressure on the employees of the city of San Angelo. Your advisor, independent advisor, went through a procurement process, found carriers, third-party administrators to administer your benefits. But there was no savings there because all the discounts were about the same. And that's where I came in. I'm a former healthcare executive. I ran two insurance companies as regional president and had a vast array of information to help you solve your problem and lower your healthcare cost. Thank you. And we went through a bid process directly with the hospitals in the local marketplace and was able to secure a 35% overall healthcare cost reduction. And we agreed at the time that I would be paid on a percentage of savings basis. If we didn't deliver any savings to you, I would not be paid for my services. We presented on May 15 with your staff here that health plans is saving money. Year-to-date savings as of April was over $250,000. And we were seeking approval to pay for my services and my team's services on a percentage of savings basis. We were pleased to get direction from the city council based on the city manager, former city manager's direction, that we would be paid, once again, on a percentage of savings basis. If we did not deliver savings, we would not be paid. We followed the precedent, as with your current contracts that you have in place with your administrator today, where it's a, they also have 30% and 40% shared savings arrangements for certain services they provide. And at the May 15, 2012 council meeting, Councilmember Hirschfield, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, moved for the staff to negotiate a contract with me because we received verbal approval from the leadership team in multiple meetings of the course of August and September and October to move forward. After that May 15 timeframe, I contacted the staff weekly to move forward in the contract execution. Weekly. Finally, in September, we were told the new city manager was coming onboard, and that had to be delayed until he got involved. So in preparation for a meeting with the new city manager in November, I just wanted to emphasize to him, multiple visits to San Angelo, numerous conference calls on this work. This is a very involved process. Significant amount of data analysis was done, line-by-line claim analysis to show you savings, and then negotiated a three-year contract on your behalf to lower your healthcare cost. When we met with the city manager, we showed him that we have saved significant amount of money comparing your current contract with community medical center versus your old rates. We'd already seen savings as of June of $311,000. We were paid 30%, what was agreed to, for the savings that we were to deliver for you. And we did a very detailed line-up analysis to prove that we've saved you that amount of money. We also reviewed data that showed your compliance rate with standards of care was very low, and you had to fix the risk of your population because the overall result was 25%. Now, when we met with the city manager and reviewed all this information, he turned to the CFO at the time and said at the end of the meeting, did we agree to a 30% gain-share arrangement if they delivered savings? He responded, yes, we did. The Director of Human Resources then looked at the city manager and asked the question, let's talk specific next steps as to what needs to occur for them to be paid for their services? Because, once again, this is over 12 months past the services that we provided to the city. And we sent a contract addendum on November 9. And I got a confirmation email on November 9 that says, I'm so very glad that Daniel's onboard and we're moving forward. I met with Daniel yesterday about the addendum going before council. He definitely wants to go on the next agenda, which is November 20. At that time, there was no follow-up with me. I followed up weekly again. Finally, on 2/28, we had a call that was rescheduled to go over the details of what was transpired from 11/7, supposed to be on the city council meeting on 11/20. No action, no follow-up, no response to my emails or letters or calls. Finally, I was scheduled for a call on February 28. The city manager asked for a detailed workup, followed up with his comments that committed to be fair in the payment for the services that we provided and delivered to the city, saving you a significant amount of money. City manager asked for alternative financial options, which were provided on March 27. No follow-ups, no follow-ups, no follow-ups. Finally, on August 28, another follow-up meeting. And the city manager asked for a settlement payment for the value rendered. And during that call, he agreed that we'd have an opportunity for me to come and meet with city council to present the facts as to what's transpired over the last two years. I've delivered financial savings to your company or to your municipality of $3.9 million. Those are the projected savings based on the work that was done. The arrangement was, I was supposed to be paid as a percentage of a contract basis. That was a unanimous vote and approval by the city council to move forward under a percentage gain-share arrangement. Your challenge still to this day is vote number three. You've got a very sick population here because people are not compliant. You've got individuals that exceeded your individual reinsurance level of close to $500,000. And once again, your contract is gonna be up next year. And you've got Shannon and Community very interested in working with you. I received an email on 9/26, one minute, I'm wrapping up, saying that the city was not able to execute a contract due to the fact that ACAP was an affiliate of Holmes Murphy. ACAP is a wholly-owned division of Holmes Murphy. There is no separate organization called ACAP that's not owned by Holmes Murphy. My division merged with Compass in January 2013. Then the comment was, staff was authorized to negotiate a contract with KCAP. But once again, there was no contract in place to authorize that shared savings payment. We never entered into a negotiation of contract. I've never had a discussion with anyone about the contract. And the negotiations of a 30% gain-share arrangement, we started those discussions, and you can ask your independent advisor if we agree to that. It was confirmed in the November meeting of 2012. That was agreed to by the city leadership. We were supposed to be on the November 2012 docket for approval. And to this day, every addendum, every conversation, every interactions I've had with the city, we have emphasized that we only get paid if we deliver a 30% savings and we get paid 30%. It's a precedent you already have an effect with your contracts today. You're getting paid on a gain-share savings arrangement of 30 to 40%. I'm here to ask for your approval, finally. It's been over two years. We've saved the city significant amounts of money. I have documentation after documentation as to what's transpired. I just wanna be paid. And why I entered this relationship is the ethics of the company and the individuals I was dealing with. And that's all I'm asking you to do, is honor the commitments that were made to me and my company. So we're supposed to be paid $1.1 million. I understand that's a large sum of money. I'm proposing a settlement of $500,000 based on the amount of savings that we've offered and delivered to your municipality. So I'm asking you to please proceed and approve payments for the services rendered and the value delivered.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's it?
Daniel, we need some documentation on all of this.
You'll have it.
I want legal documentation. I want the votes. I want the contract. I want to see the signed contract. I want to see the provisions in the contract. I want it made available to every member of this council. And we'll go from there.
You'll get it. Thank you.
Those are your orders, sir.
Got it.
Okay. All right, let's move on now, and we will take up item number 26. This is the presentation and update on the Red Arroyo Hike and Bike Trail Project. Councilman Fleming has asked for this. And Carl Beddarts, our city engineer, will take it over. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if I can get this up. Good evening, city councilman, mayor. I'm gonna give you an update on the hike and bike trail that are run between Sherwood Way and Knickerbocker Road. Tim Wolfe is also listed on the agenda as being a speaker. I'm gonna do the majority of it if we have any questions. Tim's in the audience to help out if need be. And looking back at some history of this project, there's been discussions, numerous discussions on this project over the years. The first I found was back in 2004 regarding possible multi-use trail in this area. After various meetings over the years, over the last nine-plus years, this culminated in a nomination for a statewide transportation enhancement program grant through TechDOT in December of 2009. And this project was selected from many, many others that were nominated across the state, from other cities and other counties. So it was a competitive-type grant situation, and this was selected. First one I might go over is just the budgets project. This is a $4 million project. 3.2 million of that is coming from statewide transportation enhancement program grant. It's coming from TechDOT. $800,000 is the city's obligation, so 80-20 type arrangement. Talking about the specifics of the project, I said it goes from Sherwood Way to Knickerbocker. There's 4.7 approximate miles, 14-foot wide of improved surface. So right now, we're looking at concrete surface. There's four major and six neighborhood trailheads where people could have access to this facility. We're proposing three parking lots now where people can park to gain access to this. 66 parking places at Millbrook location. I'll show you a slide in a second that shows where these are. 63 additional parking places at Unitad Park and 25 near Soul Ross. Right now, in the process, we have two to three stormwater quality ponds proposed. That may change somewhat, plus or minus, but that's what we've got on the books right now. Six bridge crossings, where we're actually crossing the Arroyo with the pedestrian path. And one restroom facility near Unitad Park. And some parks and benches and rest areas throughout the project. It's a joint project between us and TechDOT. Kind of going through who's gonna be doing what. Staff at City of San Angelo is doing the trail design, trailheads, bathroom design, stormwater ponds, parking lots, getting the Corps of Engineer permit situated so we can work in that area. Doing preliminary bridge design and be doing the inspection on the project. TechDOT's doing the grant administration. They'll be reviewing our plans. They're currently working on the FEMA study that has to be done for us to work in that flooded area. They're almost through with that, I understand. Bridge Division in Austin is doing the final bridge plans for this project. They'll be heading to the lighting for TechDOT, doing some testing for us and possible lighting. We're still kind of up in there on the lighting issue. We've got three slides here that show the location of this path project. This is the Sherwood Way end of the project. I've showed the trailheads and the neighborhood trailheads where people would gain access. I've got a slide here that shows kind of what those are here in just a second. Like I said, this is the westerly end of the project. Central area of the project, College Hills area. Across there, right in here, we're showing two of the ponds. And these are still in the design phase. We're looking at where the location of those would be. We do show this, two parking lots you'll see there at Millbrook and at Unitad Park. The red triangle you see there is the restroom facilities we're installing as a part of this project at Unitad Park. The final leg of the project takes it up to Knickerbocker, crossing Soul Ross, you'll see there, with neighborhood trailheads and a trailhead. Parking area there on Soul Ross, kind of as it's shown there, approximate location, and connecting on up to Knickerbocker. This will be kind of hard to see. I apologize for that. Should've been on a bigger scale. But the project, the pathways be a 14-foot wide path. For the most part, it'll be on the ground level with embankment slopes protecting, you know, side slopes for people if they end up stepping off of it. So it'd have a matter of safety there. I do show a cut section at the bottom. There'll be some areas where I'm sure we'll have to cut through. That's not a very flat area. There'll be some cut areas and there'll be some fill areas. But it should be generally following the lay of the land that's there. We do propose six bridges where we actually cross the Arroyo with the bridge facility. Like I said, this is being designed with TechDOT Bridge Engineers in Austin right now. We do have a bridge rail going across it. It's a concrete-type bridge rail that we withstand floods that could hit it to the best that we can build there for that facility. David Neff is also in the audience here that's working with us to design, get the trailheads designed and the neighborhood trailheads designed. This is really a concept, pictures that David's looking at. Don't hold him to that exactly, but that's the general concept he's looking at. These will be positioned around the trail to give people quick access to where they're at, how long the trail is, that type of thing, what kind of shopping might be nearby, parks might be nearby, that type of thing. And David's gonna be working with ASU students to produce a logo for this and trail maps. The final thing I have here concerning the stormwater is we're gonna be constructing stormwater ponds in various locations throughout the project. These will be intercepting the floodwaters and hopefully improving the stormwater quality as it goes downstream. Project timeline, just to wrap this up, we're in the current stages of design, current final design. Our plans are being continually reviewed by TechDOT to make sure we're within their guidelines. Our final plans, we're shooting for a January 2014 deadline there and letting sometime in July of next year. And the project time tentatively is around nine months. And what we've shown there on the pass, I might back up just a second, is really tentative. We plan to have several alternates in our bid to where, depending on how the costs come up, that we could do more or we may have to do less. But that's our first shot at it right now. With that, that's all I have for you.
Questions?
A couple of questions I have. One, you said it's gonna be concrete the whole way, right? So it's gonna make it nice and smooth where people can push strollers and bicycles and things like that?
Yes, sir.
It'll be real nice, okay? And then, do you foresee any problems with the starting in July?
There's a lot of problems that are out there. We have Corps of Engineer permits we have to get. We're dealing with archaeological issues. I was talking with the TechDOT representative tonight. We're hoping to overcome all those issues, and my goal is to make that happen. I think the way the funding is set up, we're up against a tight deadline on this. So it's... I think the way the funding is set up, we're up against a tight deadline on this, so it's -- I think it's got to happen in July at the latest.
The reason why I say this is on -- I'm sorry, Charlotte, one more thing. The reason why I say this is my next item is I'm going to kind of tie these two items together somewhat as best I can, but timing is the issue, and my next item, we're going to want to move forward before that, before the end of this thing would be done. So that's only all the questions I have.
Good, thank you. Charlotte?
I just listened to your presentation, and it totally matches, including the maps that I've had since June of two thousand and nine in the book that this has been working on. The timeline is what bothers me. It has taken a long time to get this thing kicked off and started. I started getting involved in two thousand and five, then we waited in two thousand and nine, so I would like to push it through as fast as we can. Funding's there, it's been granted, you know, through a grant, and the people have been hearing about it, and we need to see something that is being done, and I'm more than happy to share this with Mr. Fleming if he doesn't have it.
I don't.
That will let him know, give him some ideas. I just would like to have it back, but I'd like to share it with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. I would like to meet with you sometime in the next week or two to talk to you about the storm and floodwater ponds, if I may, and see what you have in mind, and let me tell you what I have in mind. In fleshing out and completing this project, I have a little concern that this thing has been designed for such a long period of time. Are you running into any change in circumstances of the area that give you cause for concern?
What we are having concerns me with the drainage is this being a floodway, we have to have zero rise. We have to have a zero-rise certification through FEMA, and it's one of the certifications we have to do. And we're doing hydraulics. TechDOT's working on hydraulic calculations and drainage calculations to make that happen. And that's where some of these drainage detention ponds are actually coming to a place where we can kind of displace some of the volume that we're having to build up for some of the bridges. The bridges are not going to be very high, and I could consider it an overpass here on the loop or something, but I mean, they do come up a distance where we're having to displace that field that we're having in for the bridges.
How long do you anticipate before FEMA completes their study?
Well, we just, we actually do this study ourselves, and if we can certify that, then we're good. So, and we're within a month of doing that, I think.
Okay.
Marty, do you have anything? Ms. Fleming?
The last thing, the cost, I know this was done so long ago, are we still going to be able to get what -- because cement costs have gone through the roof in the last three to four years.
That's the reason I kind of threw in the deal about the alternates. I'm hoping, I mean, fuel's going down now, so I'm hoping maybe the prices will get a better price, but we're right now working on our final, not a final estimate, but a tighter estimate right now to kind of see where we are. We're hoping we can do that, and that's the best I can tell you today.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what I'm hearing is giddy up.
Yeah.
Is there any comment from the public on this after hearing the discussion? Come ahead.
Thanks for that presentation, by the way.
Very good. Yes, sir. State your name, three minutes.
Rob Ellers. I'll take much less than three minutes, but I'll take probably more when I come up in a few minutes on another subject. Did I hear concrete is the building material? Okay. As somebody who's run for about thirty-two years now, I run for a lot of reasons, but I also do it to stay in shape, I will tell you that running on concrete is one of the most destructive things imaginable to the joints, also walking. I would suggest that you look at cinder or asphalt, both of which are much cheaper, and both of which will help you keep your healthcare costs down. Just a comment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak to this? If not, we thank you for the presentation. Let's move on now to item number twenty-seven. Pardon me. This is presentation and discussion on issues related to Gun Club Hill Road at Lake Nazworthy. Brother Fleming, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. It came to my attention, really it actually came to my attention about the problems out there on Gun Club a long time ago, way before I was ever elected to this position. I myself am guilty of walking and running around Gun Club. Do we have a slide present? I think we have a slide presentation here we're going to present at the same time. I myself am guilty of walking and running around Gun Club, and the residents there are in my district, and they came to me, and just like they've come to, I think, several of the other council members that have held my spot in the last several years, and they asked me if I could help them try to stop the amount of traffic or lessen, not stop really, that's a bad word, but lessen the amount of traffic that's up there. Their main concern with what's going on up on Gun Club is safety. We are so lucky that someone has not been hit and either killed or hurt permanently over the years, and it truly is just pure luck that it hasn't happened yet. It will happen. What I am, I've got a group of people that want to speak to us here. I think Tad is one of them. We got a petition from the homeowners that are on Gun Club, and what they would like to do, first of all, the area where the parking is, where all the cars park for the people that hike and jog and walk that area, that is not a designated parking area. We, the city, kind of have messed this up over the years where we put in a trash can, we put in some benches, and we made it look like a parking area, but that is not a parking area. I believe that it's designated as a wildlife refuge, if I'm correct on. It is. And so, it's not, there's not supposed to be any parking in that area, and we kind of overlooked that because there's not an ordinance in place that can really allow us to ticket the people that are there. My proposal is that we put pipe fencing around all those fields that are there and help the residents. I don't, I've had a lot of people come to me and say they would like to have an ordinance to say they're not allowed any walking or jogging around this. I'm not for that. I'm not going to do that. What I am for is stopping the illegal parking that's going on up there in that area. If someone lives on Gun Club, they should have the right to be able to run it, walk it, whatever. If you can run or walk out to Gun Club, you should be able to run it or walk it and try to be as safe as you can. But if you don't live there and you can't get there without driving your car and parking it in that area, that's, you can see the cars, and that one picture that just flashed, I think there's about forty cars parked there, and this was not, actually in the last two or three weeks, it has not been very busy. We were trying to get pictures. I know of times, and the residents have expressed to me at times, that there are over a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty people walk that road in a single day. Can you imagine living on a street where a hundred and fifty to two hundred people walk around your street, and you have a hard time backing out, you have a hard time going around a blind corner where you're afraid that you're going to hit somebody? My biggest worry is that I have a friend out there that has a boy that's in high school. We all know how high school boys drive, and it's a miracle that one of these people has not been hit, especially ladies pushing strollers, won't be able to move fast. So my proposal is that I would like to do some pipe fencing around all the field there and put it back to where it is. Get rid of the trash cans, get rid of the bench that's there, they shouldn't be there to begin with. And I would like to not even use city money for this. I would like to use the Lake Nazworthy fund. I think that we could possibly use that money and to put the pipe fencing around there and take it back to a wildlife refuge like it's meant to be. Did you want to say a few words, Tad?
I think there's a couple of people that want to say a few words.
Is there any other council comments on this?
Wildflower.
Wildflower.
Not life, but there is wildlife out there, but it's wildflower refuse, I believe.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. In fact, I believe it was dedicated about fifteen years ago with that sign. Six years ago, it disappeared. We don't know why. But anyway, yes, that's, I mean, we're petitioning, and I don't know if y'all have received copies of the petition, but anyway, what we're trying to do is get this area piped fenced, which is probably going to be a thousand to twelve-hundred feet of low, two-foot, eighteen-inch fence, just so you can't drive through that area. But the purpose of that is if you don't, if you can't walk over there, then you don't need to be walking in the street. And we also, at the same time, which I put on the petition, we need to go ahead and realize that we've got penal codes that are being violated and transportation codes. I also got some copies of that, just to give you some examples. In the penal code, basically, no person has the right to obstruct a highway, street, sidewalk, railway, waterway, aisle, or elevator. This is a state law, penal code. This is under section forty-two point oh-three. And for the purpose of this section, obstruct means to render passage unreasonably inconvenient or hazardous or impassable. Well, I'm forced over on the left side of the road at least three to four times a week, and that is a hazardous situation. Our main concern is safety out here, and I don't want to be the one that runs over a mother and a baby out there, and we've got a lot of people in that same situation. And like Rodney stated, we've got some, we've got a lot of construction out there. We've got one-ton trucks, concrete trucks coming through there. The trash truck even comes through there at a high rate of speed at six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. These people are walking in total black out there. I stopped a guy the other day, and I said, "Do you not understand I didn't see you until I was thirty feet from you? At least wear a white hat. I mean, do something that we can see you." But the safety issue has just gotten further and further out of hand. He was saying a hundred and fifty to two hundred a day. We're approaching three hundred more, especially during a four- or five-month period. But anyway, also, in the transportation code, just earmark it, it basically states that walkers or runners along highways or streets are to stay near the left edge of the highway or on the shoulder. And then in the next paragraph, it says, "A common sense meaning has to be given to this element. This can never be construed that a pedestrian can walk anywhere to the left of center stripe." They've got to maintain, they've got to have enough sense to walk over on the shoulder or on the side of the road, which, that's been our biggest problem. We've got defiance now from the pedestrians who think they have the right to be in the middle of the street. Just like last night, my wife's coming back home at seven o'clock, there are three abreast, guys on the inside, he's not getting out of the middle of the street, there's a car coming over the hill, so she's about two feet from him, going real slow, and he slaps the side of her car and gives her a gesture. Well, that's the kind of stuff we deal with every day, and the next time, he needs to go to jail. I mean, that's just total defiance of the law, right there. But anyway, we've got a real problem, it's just continued to fester. The only way I know to deal with it is to say no parking, put up the signs that say they're violating the transportation code, the penal code, and have, we're going to have to have the police come out and not allow them to park in the shoulders of the road, out there in the drainage ditch, anywhere. All that's going to have to be, and for a couple of months, it's going to be tough. But this thing's gotten to a point, somebody's getting maimed or killed. It's not, it's just a matter of when. But anyway, we've got several people that would like to bring up their own interpretation.
Okay, Ted, thank you. Who's next?
Rob Ellers again.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. That's pretty generous. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Councilman Fleming, thank you very much for supporting this. I've been a resident with my family on the Loop since two thousand and seven. I run it regularly, and I have seen many of the problems that Tad has just described. I'd like to give you my own, my own view of what's happening out there, and I'd like to thank Tad for inviting me out to do that. We live on Hillside Drive, which of course is the other part of Gun Club that forms what's called the KOA Loop. When we moved there in two thousand and seven, rush hour for pedestrians, for people who are walking, was around twenty, maybe twenty-five people. Now, in, on hot summer days, during prime time, morning, evening, and even fall, winter, and spring, we will see a hundred to two hundred and fifty on a very hot day, maybe three hundred in the evening. That would be okay under other circumstances, but the unique circumstances, and I think everybody knows this, but I'll reiterate them, are that this road has eleven hairpin curves, no sidewalks, and in general, no berm. And about one-quarter of the people who walk the road, and I run it all the time and I drive it every day because I got to use it to get to and from work at Angelo State, about one-quarter of the people walking the road do not obey Texas pedestrian law. We have made innumerable phone calls. We have tried to stop and explain the law to people, and I will tell you what generally happens when we do that here in a minute. And it has gotten to the point of crisis, quite frankly. The city has thirty-eight parks, and another very nice opportunity for walkers coming right in the middle of the city. Let me tell you about some of the consequences of what's happened in this sort of pedestrian creep that the councilmen talked about. I personally, and all of my neighbors can tell you similar stories, have had multiple near misses caused by walkers and runners disobeying Texas pedestrian law. Walking on the wrong side of the road, walking in the middle of the road, crossing the road just randomly in front of automobiles, including mine, when I'm driving on the road. I've had to slam on my brakes. I've had to swerve. This is in a place where the speed limit is between twenty and thirty-five miles an hour. I've had multiple near misses caused by runners and walkers who are out at night without reflective gear. Unbelievably dangerous. My wife and I, a few months ago, passed an entire family walking with traffic on the wrong side of the road, all in dark clothes, with a black baby stroller and, black-colored baby stroller, and no reflective gear. Couldn't see them, just about ran them over, missed them by about ten feet. I mean, was able to start getting out of their way at about ten feet. The degradation of the grassland of the wildflower area is significant, not only because the wildflowers are dying, but because if you watch what happens when the wind kicks up there in the summer, and what it does to the KOA campground owners' facilities and to the people, where am I?
One minute.
One minute, okay. Then you'll see, you'll see what I'm talking about. The most significant experience I had coming around one of the hairpin curves, fortunately doing the speed limit, two kids on bikes, two dogs off leashes. One kid went off the road, hit a tree, got a head injury. The other kid crashed in the street, multiple cuts, contusions. The dog missed my front tire by, well, my front tire missed the dog by about this much. We have people who have thrown rocks at our vehicles, hit our vehicles, cursed at us, do all kinds of things when we simply try to stop and explain the law and what they should, what they must do if they would like to walk on that street. So, my cut on this, and I appreciate it very much, Councilman Fleming, that you've taken this up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Come ahead, ma'am. State your name, and you got five.
All right. Five or three.
Five, I'll give you five.
My name is Marilyn Ross, and we have lived on Hillside for over thirty-two years, and it is getting progressively more and more hazardous every, I mean, by the month almost. But the, besides the things that have already been mentioned, we've had people come out there on skateboards, and not just on skateboards, but being pulled behind a car on skateboards. We've had people, little old kids riding bicycles with training wheels. They have no control over the bicycle. Why the parents would put those children in that kind of danger, I have no idea. That's, you know, that's their most valuable prized possession, and then they're, you know, expecting them to get, you know, make it through there without getting injured and all. But anyway, and then besides that, we have people that ride their bicycles. I bet some of those bicycles are going forty, fifty miles an hour around there. Well, those blind curves and hills and stuff, cars can't see them coming that fast, and they can't see the pedestrians walking with the strollers and all that and the dogs. Anyway, there are just numerous, numerous safety hazards out there, and it's, you know, it's scary to have to live that way every day, coming and going. That's the only way we have to come and go, and they have a choice where they can walk, but we don't. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd say, like to say that it's past time to really act on our situation on Hillside and Gun Club. It's a It's, I had my father drive over 300 miles to visit us one week, and he came in, and he was in his 80s, and he's coming around the, the curve, and there's, there's one curve that we really don't, doesn't show justice when you're coming around the, the very end, about a mile into the circle, and that sun hits you right in the face. You couldn't see an elephant walking around that curve, much less a little baby in a stroller and, and a couple of people walking. He just barely missed these people, and he was so shook up, it just ruined his whole trip coming out there. That was just his one day. Every day, we have to try to go around that hill to go to work, and we cannot see the people. The sun hits you right in the face. There's a couple of turns that there's, it's just impossible to see. We've got over 30 parks already in place in this town. We've got over 27 miles of walkway. Beautiful. There's, there's a lot of places to walk in this city. I ask you women, men, to vote, and let's get this safety hazard cleaned up, and let's get it where we can be safe here in San Angelo.
Thank you, sir. Who else wants to speak to this? This is your opportunity.
I'd like to move that we, that we proceed with the process of trying to figure out if we can use, one, if we can use the money from the Lake Nazworthy Fund, and I would like this, I would like the process to start in the spring, us building this and taking it back to legally where it should be at. I'm not asking them to do an ordinance to stop the walking and the running. I'm asking us as a city council to stop the illegal parking that's there. Take out the trashcans, take out the benches, put up signs that say, "No parking," and it's a tollway zone for anything on the shoulder there. That's what I'm asking for.
This is a, it is just presentation and discussion. It's not an actual act.
Yes, I just want us to move forward though on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask the chief to come forward and talk to us where if we piped that off and people couldn't park there, what kind of problems or non-problems, or how it would help or not help with traffic concerns, because that's right on a curve going over the bridge?
Well, you know, this, this has been in front of council a couple of occasions, and we've offered some suggestions. Some of the things have been implemented. We did make a, we didn't, but the city chose to make a no parking zone along the KOA area, and then create a parking location for the other vehicles on the other side of the road. There are benches, there are trashcans. You know, there was a couple of suggestions that, that we had brought forward. We go out there, we write parking tickets. We, we patrol the area. We, we have signs posted already on how and what direction people are supposed to be walking. Obviously, it's, you know, there's a lot of self-discipline that needs to be taking place. Our officers make it a regular part of, the lake officers make it a regular part of their duty to drive through the area, and when they have people walking on the incorrect side of the road, to have them follow the rules properly. But we could be out there, you know, when you have 200 or 300 people, you could assign an officer out there all day directing traffic. Our suggestion at the time, or my suggestion at the time, was either privatize the road and then let the Lake Homeowners Association maintain that road, and then you can make it a private road where people don't have access to it. Or the other was, we also, when Clinton was here, we looked at creating a one-way for the vehicles to go one way. So really, the choice, again, comes to council. What are you willing to do? I guess by ordinance, you could keep people, I don't know if you could, but you could create an ordinance where that would be a no-walking area. The problem with that, that came in, that came beforehand, was when we had the discussion with some of the residents, it is a beautiful area to walk, but if we create an ordinance for people to not go walk, neither can the residents walk or ride bicycles on that roadway as well. So then that's where we came up with the idea of privatizing the road. It's their road, they maintain it, and they have total control of the road. But we spend a lot of time out there. I hear them on the radio every day checking out, and that's what they're doing.
With the pipe rail fence there, though, Tim, don't you think that would be the third option? And I think that's the best option. I think you put that all the way around, and we put it off just like it is. It starts up there, you know, from the very beginning. It's kind of starts up there up against the hill. We just bring it down and run it around, and you put the no parking sign on that side.
You know, I haven't, I haven't really looked at the, at the Knickerbocker in that area to say that the, the shoulder's not wide enough, so I don't know if, if, if people would start parking on the shoulder and walk to that area.
Well, they, they get told.
But then we don't, we don't solve the problem. We still have all the walkers there. And so, I mean, you could pipe that whole area off and, and not have parking, and we'll continue to go enforce, you know, write parking citations like we do. And, and I think mostly now, nobody parks in the no parking zone.
Well, that's not true. I saw the other day when I was out there, there was four cars in it, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, our guys usually come in around 10, some, I think one guy comes in at 10, and another one comes in in the afternoon, but.
And I'm not holding this against you guys. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I'm trying to help these people. These are people that live in my district, and, you know, if this was my street, I live on a circle, a little, mine's a little tiny circle, but if I, if I had 300 people walking around my circle every day, and I'm, I don't think there's a single person in this room that would disagree with me on this. It would drive you nuts. And then you're scared, you're constantly scared, you know, if you come in late at night of hitting someone. I just don't think you should have to live like this.
And, and, you know, at, at me being not politically correct, which I have a tendency to do sometimes on this microphone, I, I would say that my officers need to be spending more time fighting crime than worried about pedestrian issues, especially on this area. It is time that something is done, and there is a consensus made that corrects the problem. And so, my guys can get back to doing policing and not traffic control on a private, on, on the road for walkers.
I believe that the pipe rail fence is the way to do that. We're gonna, we're gonna narrow it, narrow it down. I mean, right now, you've got a giant parking lot there. I, I counted 40 cars in that parking lot the other day. If there's, you know, even if there were only one person at that one single time when I was there, there were at least 40 people on that road at one time. There probably was closer to 50 or 60.
Well, you know, the, the military takes their guys out there too, and, and they get out of the bus, and they all run around.
I know, but they shouldn't. And, and, you know, I, I like that they'd be able to do that, but run somewhere else where you're not, it's, it's too many hairpin turns.
Right, absolutely.
It's too dangerous.
Absolutely. The only way you're going to get them running anywhere else is making it against the law.
Stop the parking.
Good luck.
I don't want to do the ordinance to stop the residents from running there, or, or if you, if you drive and your best friend lives on that road, and you're, and you're jogging with your best friend, you go park in your best friend's driveway, and you get out there and run.
Is the, the spot on top of the hill, is that open to the public? Or is that, is that gated off? Do y'all know?
I don't know.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, that's city property as well as not.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm just.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, my first, when I first started talking about this, we talked about maybe possibly doing a, a loop interior, like raise it up 20 feet above where the road is and go around the top, the, kind of midway down the mountain. Well, first of all, the expense would be out of this world. Second of all, you still have the parking. I mean, the parking is the issue. If we stop having 40 people park there a time, and you have three people parked there, you know, it make it a lot, it, I'm not solving the problem 100%, and I, I, you know, I'm going to make a lot of people unhappy on this, but the people I care about the most right on this issue is the people that live on that street. And I, and I'm worried about someone, I'm just worried about somebody getting hurt.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's a very dangerous area, and the more people we get on there, the more dangerous it becomes. I don't know if part, if putting a pipe rail around that area is going to solve the problem, but, I mean, you can try. There's another thing that you can try, but.
That's it.
Bring us some options.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Ted, I'll work, I'll work on this and try to figure out how we can get, if it's possible, if we can get that money, right? Okay. For the, I want to, I don't want to drop this, though. I'm serious.
Are we ready to move on? Brenda and Dale have waited patiently for number 25. Presentation of Downtown DSA Incorporated 2013 Second Quarterly Report. Dale Velazquez, Brenda Gunder. Y'all have the floor.
Thank you, council, mayor. We're going to try to make this as short as possible. We've, we've been very active in the last few months, but I want to bring up one of the sponsorships that we provided for the Color Up Run, for this part of the Riverfest. We've got over 2,100 registrations that we will be, thank you, that we will be hosting downtown over the next two days, and about 25% of those are, are, are from out of town, and we know that from the registration information. So we're very happy about our participation in that and our sponsorship. The other thing I want to make sure is to give credit to the Chamber of Commerce and San Angelo Cultural Affairs Council for their support in providing us seed money to be able to put this event on, as, or be participants in this event, and providing a free concert for the city of San Angelo. And so I want to make sure that we'll, that, that that is acknowledged. Last weekend, we had the Art Oberfest, which is an event that we started back about 2006. It was to highlight this sheep spectacular project, the fiberglass sheep. I think I've reported that to y'all before. We're up to 80 sheep that we've sold, and so we're obviously very proud of that contribution and the contribution back to our organization. Again, numerous, numerous things going on, but I wanted to highlight those two. And with that said, now we're going to get into some economic numbers.
Before I start with the numbers, one of the things we would like to give you a copy of is one of the items that we are working on to help promote downtown and to make sure that everybody understands the depth and breadth and excitement that is going on in downtown. In partnership with the Standard Times, we are developing on a twice-a-month, a twice-a-year basis, a downtown, historic downtown San Angelo direct mailing piece, and you're about to get a copy of that. I think it particularly shows the excitement and the quality of businesses that exist in downtown San Angelo, Inc. One of the things that we do to measure the success of downtown is to look at the sales tax and the liquor tax revenue as a guide to telling us what is going there. So if you take a look at the 2013 second quarter numbers, you will see that the city of San Angelo had a $72,555 pickup in their mixed beverage dollars from the same quarter the year before. In our central business district, we look at two different areas, the central business district and the Main Street district. Our central business district goes from Harris Street to Randolph, to Washington, to Magdalen. Our Main Street district goes from Houston Hart to the Bryant Boulevard, to Washington Street, and to the river. If you look at the central business district's mixed beverage tax report, you will see that we picked up $44,000, almost $45,000 in the second quarter, which was a 33.5% increase over the previous quarter. In our Main Street district, we picked up $50,000, which was a 28.8% increase from the second quarter the year before. Today, the mixed beverage dollars generated by the downtown San Angelo, Inc. businesses now represent almost 30% of the total mixed beverage dollars in downtown, in the city of San Angelo, sorry. So we're very proud of the increase and the opportunities that has brought to downtown. If you think back to the year 2005, there were three businesses that were open after 5:00 in the evening. One was Blaine's Pub, one was Fulinto's Restaurant, and one was Miss Hattie's Restaurant. Today, we're proud to say that there's 17 bars and restaurants in the downtown area, which represents that 30% increase in the revenue driven by our downtown area. In local sales tax revenue, the city of San Angelo did $6,248,000, or almost $249,000. It was a 12.63% increase or a change of $700,000 from the year before. If you look at our central business district, again, that's from Harris to Randolph, the Concho River, and Magdalen Street, we picked up $105,000 in second quarter of the year before, which represented a 41.51% increase and was, which was $30,000, almost $31,000 from the previous year. In the Main Street district, we picked up, or we did $324,000 in second quarter, which was a $70,000 pickup over the previous year and an almost 28% increase. If you combine the sales tax and the liquor tax dollars generated in the, in the, in the district, you will see that, in fact, the city of San Angelo picked up 16.94% combining those two sales tax revenues, meaning mixed beverage and sales tax, where the central business district picked up 40.31, 31% and represented 4% of the total. And in the Main Street district, we picked up 99.73% or $714,000 and represented 10.19% of the totals numbers, total cities' numbers. The other thing that we constantly look at is the changes in terms of permits or sales in the downtown area to look at what's happening with our businesses or buildings. The 334 West Concho Avenue had been purchased last year, and they are remodeling it for a studio in the front and for living quarters in the back and upstairs. At First Financial, one of the businesses has improved their offices by $5,000. The Crockett County National Bank improved their property by $6,000, sealing up interior windows. All American Chevrolet spent $42,000 improving their facility. M.L. Letty's added a back porch to their building, which was a $2,630 expenditure. Starbucks, of course, we know has opened up or is about to open up their new facility, spending $250,000 on Third and Bryant Boulevard. Kenny Frank improved their facility by $10,000 with a carport. And the most important addition to downtown San Angelo, Inc. is the Texas Financial Bank, which is a Ben Stribling facility, which has spent $365,000 for a new office and new behind-the-scenes action for his banking facility. We then, the 119 South Chadburn Building sold for $640,000. And if you take a look at what that amounts to, is that since 2005, we have had a reinvestment in the downtown San Angelo, Inc. area between private and public buildings and people, $79 million, with the second quarter representing a $727,000 increase over second quarter the year before. If you'll go back to the businesses. The new businesses that opened up in downtown San Angelo, Inc. is the children's clothing business at 5 East Concho, Heavenly Shoes at 43 West Twoig, Iggy's at 37 West Concho, Mad Style Vintage at 9 West Boa Guard, Noco Salon at 212 South Irving, Off the Pages Bistro, which is in the new library, The Revival of San Angelo at 59 North Chadburn, Rita's Floral Design at 208 South Irving, and Wise Guys there, close to the museum in downtown San Angelo, Inc. That is our overall presentation. You have our financials in your packet. If you would like us to address any issues or questions for us, we'd like to hear those now.
Council, questions?
Are we trying to target other businesses except for bars? I've heard that, you know, there's a lot of bars that are.
That is correct, and yes, it is one of the things that I think when we talk about trying to model a downtown area, we'd like to see continued retail growth. One of the challenges that downtown San Angelo, Inc. has, of course, is that it is a district of private property ownership. And so what we want to do is not necessarily what we can make happen to do. And certainly, if, if you start talking to a lot of the businesses, bar owners versus retail, you would say that most bar owners have probably had a greater success factor than the retail business. One of the reasons, if you take a look at it, you say that it's pretty hard to do the bar business on the internet. It's pretty easy to do retail business on the internet. One of our great challenges is the following, is that many of our downtown businesses are closed on a Monday, they're closed on a Sunday, many of them close at 6:00 at night, and if you take a look at the national trend for retail, you would say that most retail business is done from Thursday till Sunday. And so what you're dealing with is a lot of people that, if you will, they're independent entrepreneurs who choose to take their own focus in terms of when they want to open their business. We have worked aggressively to encourage people to open on Sundays. We've encouraged people to open later than 5:30. But unlike a mall, we cannot force anybody to do anything. One of the advantages you have in a mall, of course, is you can dictate a lot of, of how someone will run their business, the hours they will be open, the days they will be open. We don't have that opportunity in, in downtown San Angelo, Inc., so we're up against that challenge. If you take a look at what has happened nationally in the retail business, we know the car business has been good, the home selling business has been good, the appliance business has been good. Retail business across the country has been very soft in the second and third quarter. So you look again at downtown San Angelo, Inc., you see that the retail business isn't nationally trending as well right now as other things. And so, yes, we agree, it is a challenge, and we'd like to change some of that, that statistics on that. statistics on that. We do know that one of the big opportunities that we have, if we can make it happen, is if you can change the living conditions downtown, meaning more downtown living will change the retail business, will change some of those other dynamics. We were part of the Open Spaces event in September, as well as we helped hold an open house with Thirty West Boa Guard a couple of weeks ago. We are so thrilled that the three people invested in that building. Those apartments, if you haven't seen them, are fantastic. And we hope now that that facility is open, that other people will look at it and say, I think I could do that, too. That's what I want to do. We have, as you know, have acquired the Roosevelt Hotel. We have worked with a couple of people, the people that are interested in that hotel in terms of perhaps developing it are all interested in downtown living. We met with a gentleman two weeks ago who is, does not live in San Angelo. He actually lived in Waco and did a lot of revitalization in Waco using market tax credit dollars and has had great success. He is very interested in San Angelo, is very interested in working with us on the Roosevelt, as well as another building. And as he said, it's so amazing to see what's happening in San Angelo because most cities have downtown living first and services follow, whether they be restaurants, whether they be bars, whether they be retail. We are lucky in San Angelo downtown because we have a grocery store nearby, in fact, two now. We have dry cleaners, we have banks, we have medical, we have drugstores, we have all of the services that are important to make downtown living happen. And he said, I've never seen another town who's had the success you guys have had in downtown without downtown living.
Charlotte?
Yes, could you tell me how much money a year the city of San Angelo contributes to downtown San Angelo?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And that dollar factor for us last year, based off of the money we raised, was thirty-four percent of our total budget last year.
Okay, on your profit and loss and budget versus actual that you provided for us, is that seventy-five thousand is not included in that line?
It's all included in the contributions.
In contributions?
Yes, ma'am. It's in revenue, so it's in contributions, yes.
Further comment from counsel? Do we have any comment from the public on the downtown presentation? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all all right? You want to stop for a minute or keep?
We'll have to take a short break.
Let's take a break. Eight, several items left, and it is 8:23, and we're going to push them through. We are now ready for item number 28, which is a presentation of the City San Angelo Development Corporation, calendar year 212 Annual Report Discussion, Possible Action Regarding Goals, Objectives, Procedures for Costa D.C. Your own, Brother Steeman.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Uh, I'll try to keep this as brief as I can, but it's a.
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that's.
It is an annual report.
That's the point.
Says it's about a year's worth. We can do the short version, which would be the end. I do want to point out that I've uploaded the, the annual report to the website now, so it's at www.sanangeldodevelopment.com. Or you can now go to advancedsanangelo.com, and we have a portal there that has all of the Economic Development Partners websites. You can just click on whichever one you want. And that is, again, www advancesanangelo.com. And I just stole all of John Dugan's thunder on that one because he hasn't really released that yet. So the mission statement for Costa D.C. is working with economic development partners. Costa D.C. retains, strengthens, and diversifies the job base of the community to ensure a vibrant and business climate for San Angelo and the region. And this shows the, all of our economic development partners, which includes, of course, the Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Development Center, the Business Incubator, now called the Business Factory, the Concho Valley Workforce Development Board, City of San Angelo, which is one of our, obviously, most important, Downtown San Angelo, and Howard College. And we've got this all centered around now the Business Resource Center logo because we are trying to concentrate a lot of our efforts now through the Business Resource Center. I was going to tell you a little bit about the evolution of Costa D.C. Of course, the original ballot was passed in 1999, and it was approval of a half-cent sales tax and had very limited approved uses, including dredge, the dredging of Lake Nazworthy, some Coliseum and fairgrounds improvements, and promotion and expansion, or promotion and/or development of new and existing, or expanding business enterprises. And it had a term of six years for that original ballot issue. Then in 2004, it went to the voters again. The approved uses were extended. I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but it's quite a list of approved uses. And one of the biggest changes was that the term was extended for 20 years. 2010, it went back to the voters. The approved uses basically were voter-approved projects, affordable housing, which was extended for a 30-year period at the current rate, which is three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, water-related projects on an increasing basis from a minimum of 21 percent of total receipts, increasing up to a maximum of 72 percent of receipts as the voter-approved projects are paid off, which then left a max, leaves a maximum of 28 percent for economic development-related projects. Capital improvements and infrastructure projects other than water infrastructure and economic development requiring additional funding must be submitted to the voters for approval. So that was the biggest change in 2010, was the 72-28 split. And in future financials, you'll see there's, we now run two columns in the financials, the ballot side projects, and then the economic development side. Economic snapshot for 2000, and keep in mind, this is 2012 calendar year. So these numbers have changed, and there are some things that have gone on in the last nine months here that will not be reflected in these numbers. But as everybody knows, for example, the oil and gas industry is really starting to pick up, so these numbers are going to be skewed considerably. But first quarter from 2007 through 2013, this gives you an idea of what, what has happened across the industry sectors. In the information sector, we've lost a, a number of jobs. Everything else we've picked up, the most being in trade, transportation, and utilities, and also in leisure and hospitality. A third behind that is education and health services. New businesses, Tom Green County from 2007 through 2013, and this is first quarter, third month for each of those years. Again, professional business services showed some, some significant gains, 38 new companies. Also leisure and hospitality, education and health services, 25. Some losses in financial activities, information. Manufacturing jobs actually went down during that period. One of the better indicators of what's going on is the half-cent sales tax, and our, and our sales tax receipts overall have gone up now for three, 36 straight months. So since we had our low in 2009, which is actually the gold line there, in 2010, it was kind of up and down. But 2012, 2013 have been good years for, for sales tax. Idea of the balance sheet, giving you an idea of where we are, this was, again, the December 2012 balance sheet. This is not an audited balance sheet. The last audited statement we have is from the end of fiscal year 2012, which would have been September 2012. We had total assets of six million, 6.1 million roughly. Total in checking and savings was 4.6 million, accounts receivable about 400,000. Other current assets, including the inventory at the Business Park, totaled just over a million. And then liabilities, we had unreserved fund balance of 2.8 million, so the balance sheet Under marketing and recruitment, and this presentation, by the way, follows generally with the, the format of the report that I believe you had a draft copy of in your, in your packet. Of course, marketing recruitment is done by the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, and it's done by a contract, annual contract with Costa D.C. The annual contract amount currently is 225,000 dollars, and we are in the process now of renewing that contract. Marketing efforts through 2012, attended five, John Dugan in particular, attended five trade shows, 10 association events, hosted 21 prospects here, ads placed in Trade Magazine, six marketing materials sent to trade show contacts, over 600, and we had a request for 49 different proposals from different companies. Some of the recruitment projects, of course, our latest is Medhab LLC, which is a medical device company doing manufacturing and sales. The job, target job creation is between 75 and 225 jobs, and intended capital investment, a minimum of 125,000 within two years, capital investment or lease within six years up to $2 million. And the incentives include job creation at a, at a rate of $7,900 per job or per full-time equivalent, $1.8 million maximum. And they must retain those jobs for six years from the date that they receive an incentive. And to date, they have not received any incentive. Capital investment, 15, we have a, we would give them a, an incentive of 15 percent of their capital investment to 300,000 max. Real property investment within six years, 52 percent, up to $575,000. Code compliance items, if they were to buy a building and had specific items they needed to, specific improvements they needed to do that were code-related, we would pay 25 percent of those, up to $12,500 maximum. Rent forgiveness, they are currently located at 2009 West Boa Guard Avenue, which is our CVCD or Concho Valley Center for Entrepreneurial Development, Business Factory Annex, three years at a dollar per year. And that lease was valued at $18,000 per month. So when you see the, the rather large numbers in incentives to Medhab, keep in mind that one of those things was that they, they agreed with us that to value that lease at $18,000 a month. So there's a huge apparent incentive there that's, that's no cash out of pocket. As of December 31st, Medhab had received no incentives, and to date, they have not received anything other than rent forgiveness, and I believe they have about 10 employees now in San Angelo. Ethicon, in 2012, we entered into some negotiations with them. They intended to spend between 16 and 28 million dollars at their local plant to upgrade to newer systems and also to retain and/or retrain up to 30 at-risk positions. To date, they have not signed the agreement for the 30 positions. They've only done the tax rebates. They have, however, done the majority of the investment that they intended to do, and they continue to be a good, good client of Costa D.C.'s. Herschfeld Energy Systems, formerly Marthaford Herschfeld, this was an agreement that was entered into in 2010 for an energy plant. They did, they made a capital investment of $20 million in phase one, which they have completed, and they were looking at the time at an additional $20 million investment for phase two. Intended job creation was up to 225 full-time equivalents. Actually, in 2012, the first two quarters, they hit that target of 225,000 and actually exceeded it. However, in the second two quarters, as we went through our audit of their annual report, we noted that their, their employment had dropped off. We evaluated the second two quarters at about 155 full-time equivalent positions, down from 181 that we had originally incentivized. We are now in negotiations with them to look at a longer-term plan and how we're going to, how we're going to address that. They have gone away from the wind tower business. They were doing oilfield-related tanks and vessels, that sort of thing. They've now completed almost a, a total conversion of the plant over to the bridge side, so they're, they're, will be doing bridge manufacturing in that plant. They probably will have in the neighborhood of 100 employees. They have been required by, they also received, in addition to our incentives, they also received a grant from the governor's office, from the enterprise fund, and the governor's office has required that they repay that fund. We are now looking at, because our agreements also quoted the governor's fund, the enterprise fund, we're looking at what our procedure is to reevaluate everything that we've done, and I've been working with the legal department to determine whether or not we're going to ask for a portion of that grant back. At some point, we are going to be asking for some amount back, I feel fairly confident. But I think we want to look at this company as, they're not going to do 225 jobs, however, they still have created about 100 jobs, and so there's going to be a sort of balancing act there. And we've got, we've got pretty good numbers on where they are in their job creation from quarter to quarter over the three years, basically, that they've been in business, so.
Mr. Steeman?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying that the, the audit that the state of Texas performed, that the Standard Times reported that they had 37 jobs as opposed to 225 jobs? Are you saying that reporting Standard Times is wrong? You're throwing around these 100 and 200 jobs, and, and the Standard Times reported they had 37 jobs based on the state audit.
I'm not sure how they looked at that, whether they were looking at, again, 37 sounds awfully, awfully low, but our last audit was based on their 2012, in year-end numbers for 2012. Could they have dropped down as low as that? Yes. And as a part of our continuing dealings with them, I would suspect we're going to do another audit before we firm up anything.
That, that, that state audit would be available to you, wouldn't it?
It should be.
Yeah, it's a matter, it's a matter of public information.
And they have, they have just submitted a fairly lengthy packet of information to us that I've requested concerning their agreement with the state, their current agreement with the state, which is a repayment agreement. So I've, I've gotten all the details on that. I have not had the opportunity to sit down and analyze that at this point.
Well, I think the first thing you would do would be to get that state audit and, and put that as first order of business, because if they're down to 37 jobs out of 225 they're supposed to have, and they're having to rebate all this money to the state, wouldn't that be a red flag for the city of San Angelo?
It has been and continues to be, and as I say, we are working with them on it.
Wouldn't your curiosity get you, ask, or ask for that report immediately?
Um.
From the state?
Again, I've been in contact.
I believe our contract calls for its own reporting mechanism.
Yes, sir.
And that, that would be what Bob would use. You're certainly right that, that would get our attention, but Bob is required to follow up in accordance with the terms of our contract.
I understand, but I think you would want their, their factual information and their finding.
For comparative.
To compare and see what, what they're saying, what the state's found is, as opposed to what they're reporting to the city of San Angelo, Michael.
And I think, I think I did mention that I have requested and received that information. I just have not had the opportunity. I've received it within the last couple of days, haven't had the opportunity to go through it yet, and I'm not prepared to make a, to hazard a guess at what that's going to, what that's going to indicate at this point. Incentives paid to date for Herschfeld in 2010, we paid them for 47 full-time equivalents, total of 282,000 dollars 2011. They added an additional 134, and then in 2012, they added an additional 50, which took them over their 225. However, as I said at the beginning of the, of this part of the presentation, we have not paid them any money this year for either their job creation or their tax incentives, our tax rebates, pending a final decision on where we are on all of these agreements. Glaziers Wholesale was another one that was done in 2010. It's, it's a continuing effort. They were required to purchase 10.75 acres of land and construct. They were required to purchase 10.75 acres of land and construct a facility of about $7.2 million. They were also required to retain 45 full-time equivalents and to create an additional 79 full-time equivalents. The incentives that we've paid to date are 124 FTEs, and we've rebated 204,000 in taxes. Currently, they have 173 full-time employees, and they've continually, from, from day one, continually performed above the required levels in, in our agreement with them. Blue Cross Blue Shield, they have a total payroll of at least, they're required to maintain a total payroll of at least $12 million. Their incentive is $37,118 per year for 10 years, we've paid them to date 111,000, and they have not filed their 2012 request yet, I've reminded them of that, and they have been a bit slow in applying for that, but anticipate we'll be getting their request in the near future. And again, they have maintained their employment level, their total payroll well above what was required in the agreement.
How long do we give them?
To apply? Once they've, once they exceed about 60 days, we're not technically obligated to do anything with it.
Aren't we way past 60 days?
Um, yeah, we are, however, we're, we're not quite to, we've, we've sort of allowed them to not do that, it's not that they aren't performing, they're just not asking for the money, which is kind of a different kettle of fish, they're performing under their contract, they're just not asking for the money.
But they have to, they have to give us that report, correct?
Yes, sir.
And before we do anything, we have to...
Sorry?
This was for 2012 that they haven't given...
That's correct, sir.
So... I, I suggest if somebody is working for that company, I would be telling them they need to get that report in, we're way past 60 days.
I agree. Business retention and expansion, per the strategic plan, one of the items was to implement a formalized business retention and expansion program, or BREP, with regular outreach to existing San Angelo businesses. I'm not gonna go through each and every one of these goals and objectives, but suffice it to say at this point that we have, with Costa DC, we have established a BREP committee that consists of three board members plus members from the chamber, myself, and also the Small Business Development Center, and we have, we've met about four times now to identify some tentative goals and objectives for our business retention and expansion We would, we've had some suggestions from those board members and from those committee members that we perhaps approach council about having two or three members of council on that committee. As we go forward over the next couple of years, we know that particularly some of the smaller existing businesses in San Angelo are gonna be feeling the effects of the oil and gas boom, they're already seeing it in the way of salary demands and difficulty in hiring people, and if they're, the idea is maybe with, working with council, we can set up some goals and objectives for how we want to address that situation, and really at this point, we're, we're just sort of brainstorming that, that approach. One of the big elements in what we've been doing thus far is the Business Resource Center, as I'm sure everyone here is aware, we've taken that from concept to completion of the facility now, we've, we've been in there almost 11 months. The Small Business Development Center, Costa DC, the Business Factory have permanent offices in the facility, and then our other partners have satellite offices that they can utilize when, when we're working together on projects, and we're still, I would say, working through some of the machinations of how the partnership is gonna work relative to that, that centralized resource. It has been, I think, a great resource from the standpoint of our inner relationship with the Small Business Development Center, where they bring, they have their clients come in, and as an example, we now hold the Development Review Committee meetings in our conference room in that building, so as the Small Business Development Center brings in a client, the client wants to build a building or renovate a building, or is looking for a building, whatever, they can bring them over to, to me, and we work directly with them in conjunction with the Small Business Development Center to get them into a, or get them at least to understand the, the application permitting process, and, and then eventually get them into a building. We've also been able to move some of their clients into the business incubator upstairs, we now, our incubator space is full, and we've got two or three people on the waiting list to get office space there. Of course, Business Resource Center is, is a one-stop shop for business resources to grow and maintain local businesses by providing exceptional business services and to strengthen San Angelo's appeal as a place to do business, and basically, the bottom line is to create a business-friendly environment within the city of San Angelo. We've talked before about this, but target industries as part of our strategic plan, we had basically five major areas of target industries. Energy was a very important target industry when we first started the strategic plan, we've sort of been given a gift of that one now, and we're not promoting it as much. But agribusiness, regional goods and services, including regional medical, arts and entertainment, festivals, that sort of thing, and especially retail stores are some of the target industries we're looking at, also information technology and customer support, and advanced manufacturing and logistics. And of course, this is a plan just like any other plan, and although we're not concentrating as much effort on the energy industry now, either wind energy or oil and gas, we may want us to reevaluate some of our target industries and look at other, other options. Excuse me. Goals of the, of the strategic plan, if, if y'all want me to go through these one at a time, I will, but...
That'd be okay.
Sorry?
It's all right, meet pass.
Okay. That, the plan is available on the website. Something that we looked at, and I'll just touch on this very briefly, another thing that we did in 2012 is we, we had a consultant look at our development process for, for subdivisions and permitting. This is our subdivision plat process, and this is the improved process, which seems a little bit long, but there's really only one, two, there's about five, six steps there. And this, you can get this thing through the process probably quicker than any place I've ever worked in, and I've spent a lot of time in, in land development. Our site plan and permitting process, again, looks like a, something of a complex process until you look at something like a city that's not too terribly far from here, about three hours, and this is their development process. I don't think it'd be fair to say that it was San Antonio. That's, that's off the City of San Antonio website. And there's a lot of, if you, if the answer is no, you start back at the beginning, this doesn't just go through the process once, you can go through this several times, and the bottom line on it is, seriously going through their development process, what takes six months, six to nine months in San Antonio probably takes two to three months here, if you had to really go through the whole process. Major voter-approved projects, of course, we've got the affordable housing, $335,000 per year, and there, in 2012, they did gap financing of about $202,000 for five new housing units for first-time buyers, did Helping Hands, did $53,000 rehabbing 25 houses, housing units for elderly homeowners, and the Blitz, $150,000, did siding and painting on 48 housing units for low-income homeowners. Contra River Improvement Project, 13.6 million, and that was a specific voter-approved project, that number may have changed a little bit, now we still have some, there's still some work going on, and there's, there's been some modifications to the contract, but contract's moving along. Hickory Aquifer, $12 million, Costa DC funding, we're paying the, the debt service on that or a portion of the debt service on it, pipelines complete, working on the treatment plant. Rio Vista Park, now Jaime Padron Memorial Park, Jaime, Padron Memorial Park, sorry, and I misspelled Padron, $636,000, that's complete, and it was just rededicated here about two weeks ago. Livestock Barn, 100, about a million dollars, that was complete, and they did a really good job, got that done in time for the rodeo last year, or this past year. Other major voter-approved projects, Municipal Pool, 3.2 million. Airport Terminal renovation is ongoing, it's a $5.9 million project, 500,000 of which is Costa DC funding, and our funding is for non-FAA-funded items. Of course, 50th Street, now Lakeview Heroes Drive, it's completed, and I don't recall what the budget was on that one. On the horizon, of course, the activation of the Advanced San Angelo Web Portal, which is now up and working, with the exception of Howard College, which is having a problem with their site for some reason. Development of the industrial park, we've just closed, sale on 20, or in the process of closing the sale on 20 acres, there, they've signed the contracts now, I'm gonna meet with the environmental guy next week to walk the site, and that should finish that up, and all the paperwork is in the title company's hands. We're looking at possible coworking space in the Business Factory, I won't go into that, but it's basically a, a first step for small entrepreneurs, we have some space available, we may be able to use for that, and it's something we're just starting to look at. And of course, completion of the BRC finish-out, we didn't, we have some money left in the budget from the construction project, which basically means we came in under budget, and we may use some of that for furniture and/or other things, once we just make some determinations on some of the use of space, in the meantime, we're not looking to spend that money. And one of the biggest things probably on the horizon is, I think, what I've talked about here as far as not just business retention and, and expansion, but also just a general working and establishment of goals and objectives for Costa DC as we go forward, we have a new council, we have a new, relatively new board, and I think it's gonna require some, some working, some coworking between council and Costa DC to identify the goals and objectives that this council sees for, for Costa DC and give us the guidance, the Costa DC that we need moving forward. And this is what the Advanced San Angelo website looks like, you can, this is just, obviously just a slideshow, but you can click on any one of these and it'll take you directly to the website of, of the partners. You are? Our Board of Directors, this was the 2012 Board of Directors, towards the, the fall 2012, excuse me, Joe Tarazas left the board and Pedro Ramirez joined the board, Pedro is, is still on the board now, and then our 2013 board with the new members, and at this point, I'll open it to questions.
Yes, when, preferably by the end of November, if you could provide me or the rest of the council, I'd like to know, you mentioned the minimum 21%, max 72%, and economic development, 28%, that's the numbers that are allowed to certain things, water is a minimum of 21%, maximum 72%...
Correct.
...half-cent sales tax, and economic development 28 cents. If you could provide us with a breakdown each year where those percentages lie, what has been spent, whether, am I making myself clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was afraid it was too late, 'cause you were looking at me through swinny eyes, okay.
No.
I really would like to know that, and then also, it was either the end of July, 1st of August, council had requested the Costa DC Board work on changes on eligibility requirements, and I've not seen anything in the minutes or the Costa DC Board minutes where they're working on that, or do we have any anticipation of when it's gonna come back?
We, we did a, yes, as a matter of fact, we did the original change, which was back to the 2012, January 2012, we did that change, and then I took a change, a proposed change to the Costa DC Board, and they've approved it for tightening that requirement a little bit more by including something Mr. Wardlaw had requested, which was to address the, not just the individual receiving a benefit from Costa DC, but the company at which the individual is employed, whether that be a councilperson, a Costa DC member, or an employee. So we have, we have done that, I have not brought that back to council, because I, I think we'd like to look at some other changes, I believe, Ms. Farmer, you suggested that we look at all of the policy guidelines and, and work, work through that, and I, that's part of what I think, what I would like to do with council if we can do it.
I just don't want it to linger and get lost in the follow-up. The other thing I wanted to ask you is if you could provide some statistics or numbers for us at some time, is that I noticed in your presentation the half-cent sales tax, that one of your goals was directed in promoting the downtown association, of the downtown San Angelo revitalization, and I, I'm reminded that the half-cent sales tax is paid by citizens of, all over San Angelo, not just downtown, and every, now and then, it's good to refresh us or let us know, I know at one time, I believe it was Rick, provided us a map of the city in the areas where, that showed us a picture of where half-cent sales tax monies had been paid, and it's, I would like to see that updated if possible, those are my questions and requests.
Okay.
Thank you.
Something we can do.
You said that you were under budget on the BRC, how much under budget were you?
I think there's about 60-some thousand left.
Then you said something about furniture, which really perked my ears up on that, as we all know, the furniture situation. We're not gonna spend 60-something thousand on furniture, I hope?
No, sir, we're not. And I, we had some, we had some expenditures that were actually, that were actually approved, that I haven't, I haven't gone out and spent the money, just simply because if, if, if we change sort of directions on some of the, the space, we may not need to spend it, I certainly don't wanna buy something that we're not gonna use six months from now, we don't see an immediate need where it's holding us back on anything, so I'd rather just not do that for the time being.
So are you gonna hold that 66,000, or?
As long as y'all will let me.
Well, if it were up to me, I wouldn't let you hold it for very long, I would, I'd be using it for other things, but that's just my opinion.
And that is 60, 60, roughly 65,000?
I've got a pipe fence I could use that for.
Thank you, Marty. No, sir, I'm sorry, your, your, your expense doesn't qualify.
I understand.
Further counsel?
That's it.
Have anything from the public, public comments on Brother Steeman's presentation? If not, then we thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
It's 8:59, how long, how late do y'all wanna stay here?
Let's get it done, let's keep going.
Okay, let's hit with consideration, possible action on matters relating to watering of the city parks, sport fields, Santa Fe Golf Course, Fairmount Cemetery, Shane Kelton, Roger Havlak, and when it, when any one of y'all says motion to adjourn, you've got an automatic second, so...
I'm gonna get started quick.
Yeah?
Yes, sir.
We've, I'm, I'm about to make that motion, but in, in interest of speeding this thing along, we've had this presentation twice.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we need it again, and I'll, I'll make a suggestion, y'all can either vote it down, or, or approve it, or modify it, or whatever, but I'm, I'm ready to act on this, 'cause these guys made a great presentation the last, at the last council meeting.
Counsel, well, we do have some staff recommendations towards the end of the presentation, if y'all would like for me to go through that, that's fine.
Go to the end.
Go to the end. Okay.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'd like to pick up right here for just a moment, just to show you a, a couple of things. As you can see, we have different divisions that we're, that we're discussing, we're talking about parks, we're talking... parks, we're talking about the sports complex, Fairmount Cemetery, and Santa Fe Golf Course. Our current budget is about two hundred and eight thousand dollars for the parks division. If we are going to need or require up to thirty-eight inches of water a year as supplemental irrigation, then my budget would need to be eight hundred and forty thousand dollars at four dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons.
You made this presentation last time.
Correct, correct. And it has to do with what our recommendations are. Twenty-eight would be six hundred and twenty, and you can see what the numbers are as we go down the list. If you keep the parks budget the same, at roughly two hundred and eight thousand, I would need that figure, or that rate, to be a dollar four per thousand gallons for me to put that same thirty-eight inches of water, or at least have the ability to have that budget in place so that it did not limit myself, or Oscar at the cemetery, or the golf course folks, and others, as managers of those sites. And you can see, if we even go down to twenty-eight inches of irrigation, it's going to need to be a dollar forty-one. The reason why I have the thirty-eight inch highlighted is because that is, again, it does not provide those limitations, it's not that I want to use the water, or that I will use the water, but if you only give me enough money to do twenty-eight inches, that amount of money could actually end midsummer, and then we'd be back in the same shape that we're in now, to where I don't have a budget to continue watering at the critical times when we need to, especially if we have an extremely dry year. The recommendations that we have would be to continue to irrigate basically our highly utilized sites that we have. Of course, with the wonderful rains we've had over the last month, we're not watering, in fact, we haven't turned on any irrigation since I met with you a month ago. And of course, we'd like to look at things that we can do to possibly some of those other areas, but again, it's going to depend on the amount of budget that I have in place, and right now, it's pretty minimal. And again, there's other recommendations there. One of the things about Fairmount Cemetery, of course, we've had issues with stressed and dead trees in that area, and I know there's great concern with that area, but that's a little bit different type of budget as well, because to me, that's more of a business type, or an enterprise budget, to where they're looking at revenue versus expense, and hopefully the revenue is above the expense at the end of the fiscal year. Well, on their irrigation, it limited them to only about fifteen thousand dollars in their budget, which only gives them about three waterings in a given year. So, with that being said, if you do provide the additional funds to water that site adequately at the lower rate that we would recommend, again, we need to be careful as we go through the process of looking at it at the end of the fiscal year, if we're, if you give them fifty-nine or sixty-one thousand dollars, and at the end of the year, they're over by sixty-one thousand dollars, they actually did quite well, because they used the water that they needed to appropriately, if they had to use that amount, but yet, they did not overspend in all of the other line items within their budget. Would y'all like for me to go over some of the recommendations on the golf course and whatnot? I'm seeing a no.
I would rather that the golf course, the trees, have unlimited budget for the next twelve months for water, and not be charged, you know, so that we save those trees, we don't get ourselves back in a situation where we're losing fifty, sixty, eighty trees. And that's one way to do it, and other people may not agree with it, but that's my solution to the problem. And the same way with the Fairmount Cemetery, you pick an arbitrary number, and it always falls way short. I mean, the Fairmount was out of water early on, like you said, three waterings a year? I mean, why are we even talking about this? So that's my recommendation. I don't know whether this council wants to go back and look for three, four, five hundred thousand dollars for watering fees, if they do, I'll go along for the ride, but I'd prefer not to.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move.
Second.
Clarify the motion.
For the next, for the next fiscal year, that these four entities be allowed to water prudently, without any charge to their respective departments, and that would just be for a twelve-month period. And I'd also just say, it's not part of the motion, if it doesn't rain, we're going to run out of water in a couple of months anyway, and so, you know, the exercise of coming up with all this money might be for naught anyway, is my thought.
And that's my second.
Well, I think it's moot point anyway, because we've got about fourteen months of water left, and we're not catching any water but from our recent rains, I mean, it's been good for the grass and trees, but we're not catching any runoff. And in another three or four months, we're going to be in drought level three, and all of this is, this is wasted time. I'd suggest, since we're this far to the end of the year, let's wait and see what happens in the next three or four months, that would be my suggestion. But we do have a motion and a second on the floor, and we need to deal with that, but I'm not in favor of unlimited watering, especially with the drought circumstances that we're in now.
One of the things that we do as managers of this city property is, we're able to make those assessments, once we get the records back in terms of how many gallons are used per site, and it's based on acreage, and it's based on twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-four gallons per acre-inch. So I'm able to look at those sites, once I see how much we've used, and make the assessments of, yes, we're staying within the one inch, or, you know, we need to make this type of adjustment, what's going on here, that type of thing. So accountability is already in place, at least from our standpoint. We're able to watch those types of things.
And that's the basis of my motion, I'm willing, I have confidence and trust in you guys to use the water appropriately, and we don't have, we don't have the money in our budget, so I don't have any problem in going this way and turning it over to you guys. If it were a private citizen, or a company or something that was using the water, I'd feel differently about it, but not the city's parks department, which I have a lot of confidence in.
I appreciate it.
It's a, a charge, we're charging and we're paying, so, you know, it's an offset, that's, you keep track of and know exactly what it is, and ultra-conservative, but it's, we're doing the charging and we're doing the receiving, and it's, like Mr. Morrison said, you know, in a few months, we're not going to have any water anyway, so.
That's a great concern of ours as well.
Rodney, Marty?
The thing I've got a problem with, Winky, is the part of it where you say unlimited, and I realize that these guys are, that you will do a good job on this, I don't think there's going to be a problem there, but I'm seeing what it shows the public, and what we need to be doing is cutting water back everywhere, everywhere, and because we are going to run out in three months, I mean, I hate saying this more than anything, but we probably are going to lose a bunch of trees, but you know what, I'd rather have my kids drinking water and let a tree die, that's where I'm at. So there's no way, I mean, Winky, if we go through this vote, I won't, I'm not going to agree with unlimited, I can't, I just can't do it.
Okay, just vote your conscience.
Yes, sir.
I'm not with it.
I just can't, I can see, I hate letting trees die and grass die, but we, the people have to have water before the trees.
You can buy, you can buy a zarc of water, or all those other kind of waters, in the grocery store.
You and I, you and I can, but there's a lot of people in this town that don't have it in their budget to buy bottled water.
Well, they can't afford our water bills right now, and that's something I'm going to put on the agenda for the next time, but I just, people don't want to live, don't want to lose any more trees in this town, and, you know, we've spent a hundred and twenty million dollars down here on McCullough County, why can't we use that for drinking?
Well, I'm all with you on that, because we, the council, the previous councils, they messed up, that filtration house should have been done, we should be using that water right now. When that pipeline was finished, that filtration house should have been done, and it's not, and I still don't understand that, that just boggles my mind, but.
I think the word that turns everybody off, or whatever, is unlimited, and that's not what Mr., that I heard him say.
I said prudent watering.
Prudent watering, and with a limitation, that it's just asking for forgiveness of the parks department, with a limitation.
The monetary end, we're still limited, and we'll always be limited to the ordinance, just like everybody else, as well, I guess you could always change the ordinance, but we're limited with how much water we can actually put out with the ordinance, and actually, we actually, throughout all of this last year, the last two years, have actually put out substantially less than what the ordinance allows us to, simply trying to be very good stewards of what resources we do have.
Well, and you didn't have it in their budget either.
And we didn't have it in the budget either, yes, sir, and I believe, Mr. Wardlawson, it's strictly up to y'all how you want to do it, I believe what his deal is, just to do away with the monetary end of things, not necessarily allow us unlimited water to go out and put on the ground, because we definitely know we cannot do that at this point, so.
So you're saying abide by the, in this case, we're in stage two, if we go to stage three, then you'd have to abide by those.
Yes, we abide by the ordinance, just like everybody else.
And let me say one other thing, Rodney, in relation to my motion, is, I'm not saying that even, I don't think it would be legal anyway, but I'm not saying that we couldn't modify what we're doing, I'm not anticipating that we would, if we run out of water, we'll have to modify everything. So I'm not trying to lock something in, but it's just, you're just changing money from one hand to the other, and I don't think that that's really necessary right now, and, but if y'all want to try to find the money for it, that's fine with me.
No, I like that idea, but the way you made, the move, the motion that you made was unlimited, I mean, you're going to have to go back and change that in order to get my vote on it. And I agree with them on this deal, I don't have a problem with taking the money part out of the way, because we are creating it, and then we're paying ourselves, it's just going from one hand to the other, really, in a sense, but I don't, I can't, I just don't want to say that it's unlimited, it just looks bad to the public.
That's a thirty-eight inches, is what you're recommending, thirty-eight to twenty-eight inches, so you've already established how much water would be necessary, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, thirty-eight would probably be the, twenty-eight would be the minimum, but it could be an upwards of fifty-six.
So you already have an indication of how much water, you've already determined how much water we'd actually need in order for those trees and the grass.
I need to maintain the health of that plant.
Would thirty-eight be prudent?
Yes, yeah.
So could we say prudent is thirty-eight, and we don't bill, Winky?
Yeah, it's the billing part that I'm trying to get at, not the use of the water.
Yeah, and abide by the ordinance, as Rick says.
We're not changing that, we have to abide by the ordinance.
And we're not asking of that either, as our recommendation.
Well, let me ask you this, because of all the rain that we've gotten right now, and we are coming into kind of the dormant season.
Correct.
How much water do we need between now and the end of the year?
Very little, very little, I'm hoping that we don't have to turn on the irrigation again until March.
Then why are we, this kind of comes back, why are we even doing anything?
This was asked of staff to bring this to y'all, and again, we need to look at it from a planning standpoint, too, looking into the future, there's going to come a time, again, where hopefully we do have water in the lakes, but I'm still going to have the same type of budget problems, and so, again, that's why we put together the recommendations.
If we have the water, man, I'm all for this, but again, I think in four or five months, we're going to the next stage, and ain't nobody watering.
Correct.
And that's another reason why we need clear direction, if we stay in three, or two, or whatever it is, staff is continually questioned about, by the public, you know, if there are dead trees, or those kind of things, so we need clear direction before we get to that stage, as to what the council's intentions are, and if that's, you know, abide by the ordinance, but, you know, we're going to give you the money to handle it, then we know what that is upfront, and we're not coming to you at the last minute to ask that question.
I submit that there's people out there in the private sector that also would like to water thirty-eight inches a year for their trees, and simply can't afford it, and they can't say, we're just going to change the budget up so we pay a dollar and forty-one cents per thousand, because it costs them four dollars per thousand. So it may look to us like just a bookkeeping trick, and I understand it, but in reality, the private sector can't do this. This is an advantage that we are taking, because we have the water, we sell the water, and we pay ourselves, so I'm not going to support this at all, I think it's, I don't like it.
Well, I think what we had talked about last time, and I want to reiterate it here, is, these properties are all income-producing properties, and we're trying to protect the investment that is there for the continued income-producing advantage. If we kill our ballfields, and, you know, there's other cemeteries that people can be buried in, it's really strange to say that a cemetery is an income-producing property, but it is, and so, there, on one hand, we're trying to protect the income.
And Charlotte, to add to that, she brings up a good point, one of the things we brought forward during the budget process was the sports complex, and we told you then, the budget is not adequate to cover the irrigation, has not been for a while, and that's why you've seen that fund fall into the deficit, and so, you know, just to bring that up again, we've got to address the watering sooner or later in some form or fashion, so I don't know how that is, but that's what we brought up in the budget session as well.
Further counsel? I think this is the wrong time, three weeks, three months out of drought stage three, I think is the wrong time to be talking about thirty-eight inches of water on a ballfield, that's my opinion. But the motion has been made, it has been sagitated.
Public comment?
Further comment from the council? Public comment on this, before we call for the vote?
Well, what if I change, what if I change the motion a little bit, just to provide that there will be no allocated, that these departments will continue to water these properties, and there will be no allocation at this time, as far as a budget for water is concerned, that's what we're talking about.
And to follow the restrictions and the guidelines and the.
Keep watering prudently, under the current water restrictions.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and one of the goals that the city council has had, and various people outside of the city council, such as myself, have had, is that the water department is fully transparent, and what you see reflected is exactly what it costs for water. What you're talking about now is, in effect, a subsidy for a activity, a part of the city, an important part, that is paid for by the water fund, instead of the people who are consuming the water. That water is going to have to be paid for by somebody. Right now, it is paid for by the people who are paying the water bill. If the general fund money, the revenues that these properties produce, et cetera, don't pay for that, that's still going to have to be paid for, the production's still going to have to be paid for, the utilities, the chemicals needed, all of that's going to have to be paid for by the water consumers. So what you're doing is you're shifting the cost of the water from one fund within the city, onto the water fund more directly, to where the water patrons, the water customers are going to have to take and pay to subsidize more, because this water's not coming free, it's not a zero-cost thing, yeah, it looks like you're moving money around, but you're moving money from a fund that is paid for by sports complex revenues, parks revenues, property tax revenues, sales tax revenues, and you're shifting that onto a fund that is paid for by the water bill, and water users. That's what you're doing when you do this, that eight hundred thousand dollars for that water is going to have to come from somewhere, it's either going to come from the general fund, from ticket sales, from subsidies, or it's going to have to come from the consumer's water bill. That's extra money that you're going to have to charge as a rate increase somewhere down the line, that you're not charging today. So look at this carefully, and you're going to have to decide, do we really want the water fund subsidizing the park grass water? That's exactly what you're asking for, it is that simple, thank you.
Further public comment? Let's take a vote. Y'all have heard the motion, you've heard the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Nay.
Nay.
It didn't fail, because there were just three votes, so I guess, I'd say bring this thing back when we've got enough water in the lake to deal with it, and let the rest of the council make a decision, because three votes doesn't kill it.
Winky, I am in favor of this, once we get past this water situation, I think that we should, that.
I think that we should, that we should do that, and we should be going to keep these things alive, but we've got to do it when we have water, and we just don't have any water. And I just hate, I hate that we had, I mean, I still don't think that the general public understands the dire straits that this city is in. I still, people out there are just, they've got their heads in the sand, and they just don't understand. I mean, we were three to four months away, we're 13 months away, or 12 months away, from real, real bad stuff.
And we're not catching any runoff.
No.
It's very serious.
It's a great concern of ours, too. We have a large investment, and we have.
Let's move on to the next item.
Dwayne, before you do, I just want to clarify that they will continue to operate under their current budget. So we will water accordingly with that budget, including the sports complex. So if the grass is dying out there, I just want everybody to know. I'm not, I agree with what y'all are supporting, but I wanted to make sure we're all understanding that that could happen, and that's clear. So we're okay with that, we just want.
Once we go to this next level, I mean, it's.
It's all over, anyway.
We can bring it back at the more appropriate.
Okay, let's move on to item number 30. Consider, or unless somebody wants to make a motion. Unless somebody wants to say adjourn, we'll move to number 30.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have something that might help, a suggestion. Item 31, I believe, was Don Vardeman's request. And I would think it would be better for us to put that off, and I think he would prefer that, until it gets back. So I would request that that would be removed from the agenda.
And then, items 32 and 33, I think we can put off to a later date. And I think we need the other two council members there, here for that.
Is that all right, if y'all down here to move 31, 32, and 33 to another one?
Yes.
Charlotte?
That's fine.
Good for me. How about 30, you want to deal with that one?
Mayor, that's not an item that would have an overnight impact, so if you want to push that item, that can be pushed.
Let's move that one off, too.
That leaves us 34. That's discussion, possible action regarding the dissemination of news releases by the City of San Angelo. Councilwoman Farmer, you have the floor.
I was expecting to see Mr. Wilson, because I wanted to ask him. So I'll ask Mr. Valenzuela. What is the difference between a blogger and a media person?
You have your established news sources that actually do the, when they do the reporting, both sides are always addressed in the reporting. And so you have those established news sources. I know that, as a matter of fact, here comes Mr. Wilson. But that's the way that I look at it.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that. I haven't read the Constitution in two days, but Article 1 of the amendments says, "We have freedom of the speech, freedom of the press, and it shall not be abridged by any governmental entity." And Mr. Valenzuela, I have to strongly disagree with you. Freedom of speech and freedom of the press is not balanced. In fact, that's the purpose of the First Amendment to the Constitution, is to allow people that have dissent, however that may be, to express that and not be stifled. And the classic example of that is flag burning. Flag burning offends me greatly, but it's held by the Constitution. You're smiling, but it's held by the Supreme Court of the United States to be freedom of speech.
Can I simplify this whole deal right here? This is, as far as dissemination of news releases, we have the information on our website, front page. Anyone that wants to request information as far as news releases, just submit and request to have it submitted to you. Give us an email address, and anyone and everyone that needs it, we'll get it out to them.
May I finish now?
Sure.
Thank you. I looked up, because I didn't know, I don't know what a blogger is, but I looked it up in Webster's, you know, online. And a blog is an online journal for an individual group or a group of people of activities, thoughts, or beliefs. Some blogs open filters, but they're considered to be diaries. Diaries of what's happening, a type of online diary that someone makes available through the internet, or which is a very popular way of communicating. That's what it says that a blogger is. And then I looked up, and you know, a news reporter, and I got the definitions. The collection and editing of news for presentation through the media, public press, an academic study concerned with the collection and editing of news, or the management of a news medium, writing designed for publication in newspaper, magazine, computer, interviews for descriptive of events without an attempt at interpretation, writing designed to appeal to a current popular taste or public interest. It's a collection of preparation and distribution of news-related commentary and feature materials through media, such as pamphlets, newsletters, newspapers, magazines, radio, film, television, books. There are a number of things that it says that it is. And if someone has, is, through publication, does news and pays their dues to the international news people, I don't want to be messing around with First Amendment. I don't want to be deciding who we think is a blogger and who is a journalist or a news person.
Duly noted.
Well, as some of you know, the first 20 years of my working career was spent as a newspaper reporter and editor. And so, you know, I take these things very seriously. I felt like I was a protector of the First Amendment for the first 20 years of my career. And the fact of the matter is, as Mr. Valenzuela said, you know, he and I have discussed it, we're happy to provide the information to whoever wants it. But the information has always been available, on our website, on our Facebook page, and on our Twitter page. And in fact, censorship is, as you know, Mr. Wardlaw, an active act by government to prevent something from being published. And we have not done that.
So if I called you a blogger, you would be insulted, since your profession is journalism?
I am no longer a journalist.
That's not what I ask. If you were still a journalist, would you be insulted if I referred to you as a blogger? Or I made the decision up here on council that you're not worthy of a news position, you're only worthy of a blogger?
I think there is a distinction between journalists and bloggers.
Well, I'm going to make the motion that we're not in the business to prevent people's First Amendment rights. And I don't think that we should be making that decision. So I want the motion to say that we don't make the decision as to who a blogger is, or a news person, or news media is, that we do press releases to. If we're going to do press releases, we do them to everybody. You do them to everybody, but you character who you think they are, you.
Well, as Mr. Valenzuela said, and, you know, after we discussed it, I mean, obviously, I'm in the business now of public information. We want all the public, as many members of the public as possible, to have the information that we disseminate. And so, we're happy to, anybody in the audience, anybody in our watching TV audience, anybody who requests that they be put on our press release list, we're happy to do that.
I think they should be put on a press release, and that is my motion, because I don't want to mess with us, the city, controlling or trying to control the news or the information that goes out to the public. There are numerous views. CNN and Fox News never have the same opinion. But it's up to the person who watches to make that determination. And my motion is that anyone who requests to be a news press release should be allowed to receive it.
I'll second that motion.
Further comment?
Yeah, I know the general public's out there going, what is going on with this?
And I think we need to explain.
And I think that needs to be explained a little bit better than that.
Yeah, I agree.
They're sitting there going, it's going right over the top.
Okay.
You want to explain it, Anthony? You want to explain what this is all about?
We had a blogger who was reporting on some issues related to the city. And despite our offers to provide information and interviews, those weren't taken up on. And so this blogger was reporting one side of a story without reporting city management's side of a story. And so, and initially, we thought, and were hopeful, that this website would be providing information of all sorts about the city. And so, it appeared to me that this website was just interested in commentating, blogging on what happens at our city council meetings, which is fine. That is that person's First Amendment right. But in my professional opinion, that did not measure up to the level of being a member of the media. And so, we made a decision to stop providing media releases via email, but those releases are still available via our website, our Facebook page, and our Twitter page.
You left out that you changed the classification.
Did you move it from one classification down to the bloggers with the other two bloggers?
We have never sent press releases to bloggers.
Do the bloggers pay anything to be on the press release that you send out?
No, sir.
Have you told anyone that they are not allowed to use their website to produce anything they want to?
No, sir.
So you have not suppressed anyone's First Amendment rights? You have simply taken them from a reporter position and put them down with the bloggers? At that, a position that they pay nothing to the city for?
I have not violated anyone's First Amendment rights.
I guess if they were going to pay for this information, that they would have more, they would have more rights to stand. But we charge them nothing. It is a service that you provide to put them on our city website, to give them some exposure. We don't charge them.
Well, and again, we provide, every one of our press releases is posted on our website, our Facebook page, and our Twitter page. And other local bloggers, that's how they get some of their information about what happens with the city, so.
Maybe it's time to take all of them off. Maybe it's time to just remove the bloggers from our website and let them get their information from the other sources like everyone else.
Mayor, the information actually that goes out is internal, as far as the information you send out. It's internal information you send out for the council members, others?
Oh, yes, and there is a distinction between that. I mean, I do provide a daily media report for our council members, so that they will know what is being reported on by the local media. And we have included some blogs in there, because from a council perspective, I do think it's helpful that you know what's being said and written about city government within our community.
Well, I would just have to make one comment. The excuse given, as I'm told, was that you're not giving both sides of the story. And, you know, that's a wrong, that's a wrong argument. Because that does, that does get into the First Amendment, freedom of press, and freedom of speech.
Have you suppressed anyone from blogging on their own website?
I'm talking about bloggers.
Have you, has the city suppressed anyone from blogging on their own website?
No, sir.
How have we suppressed anyone's First Amendment rights? We have not suppressed anyone. Anyone in this city or in the world can make their website and put anything on it that they want to. We're not telling them not to, are we?
No, sir.
Bloggers don't receive press releases.
I'm ready to take all bloggers off of your internal information that you send out. Just let them get their press releases. I mean, take them off. If they're not satisfied with the free exposure that we give them, I'm ready to take them off. We got a motion in a second, so we'll deal with it. But I don't see that we have done anything wrong.
Well, let me just say, let me take one more shot at it to publicly understand. A person was, an entity was downgraded from press to a blogger on the basis of the excuse that they weren't presenting both sides. And that is Ms. Farmer's objection, and that is my objection. And that does infringe on the right of the free press. Y'all think the New York Times provides both sides? The Standard Times is notorious for its liberal bias. The Austin American Statesman, you've got to be kidding. They're so liberal, they're way out in the Twilight Zone.
Further comment from council?
May I, very quickly? I don't have a problem with the motion, to be honest with you. I think that, again, as we just mentioned a while ago, that's a decision that's been made anyway. Anyone wants to request information as far as press releases to be emailed out, we don't have a problem with it, we send it out.
Mr. Harry?
Harry Thomas, I'm a community volunteer, and I come to most of these council meetings over the last six or eight months. I will have to make one comment here, and you can take it for what it's worth. This is not worthy of the council's time or the public's time out here. The difference between a news person and a blogger, I mean, it's very, very difficult line to see. But the bottom line is, as long as the information is available to someone, we're spending a lot of time that's not necessary.
Thank you, Harry.
Let's spend it on water issues.
Motion's been made, it has been seconded. And what was, clarify the motion for me again.
You have more comments?
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and as everybody knows up there, I'm pretty sure I am a blogger. And I have also done some news reporting. I've had stories published within the press here. I think you're taking and dealing with an issue where there's really, you're trying to put too fine a spin on the difference between traditional journalism, media, newspapers, and so on, and the emerging type of journalism that started out as the definition you read in blog, of a blogger. But blogs today are not what they were even when the dictionary made their term. Most blogs today, of any substance, with any readership, do not stick to just a diary-type thing. They do a lot of news, and they are also called citizen journalism. There's a lot of different names. Don't get hung up on the names. What needs to happen here is a fair treatment of the information, news, opinion, sources within the city and within the community. And that's two parts. If they're listed in the website, on the city's website, you should probably have to division one, which is commercial news organizations, and non-commercial. That's a distinction that is real, legitimate. But a lot of news sites on the internet now, it's very hard to tell them from what we also used to call blogs. Some of them make money, some of them don't. Look at the Texas Tribune right now, and compare that to some of the blogs out there. Not much difference. One's called a news site, one's not. The second question is, how is that information provided to these different news sources, information sources, whether they're bloggers, journalism, commercial media, whatever? If it's a commercial media and they want to pay a price, let them get the email for that. One of the things that the city had up there for a while was an online newsletter that you could subscribe to. That's not there anymore. There's other options, as far as like automatic RSS feeds that the city could do as part of the design of the news website. Don't get hung up, though, trying to over-differentiate the other. And the last thing, I think it is not a good policy to take and give the appearance of punishing one of these news sources by taking them off a mailing list, or moving them around because you don't agree with their specific method of doing information presentation journalism, not getting the city's side on every issue. And yes, the information should be put out complete, but the First Amendment, and even journalism historically, has never required that all sides are treated equal in order to be considered as a news source or an information source. It's only fairly recently that we have presses matured in a lot of the major presses, especially to where they try to present a balanced perspective. Society of Professional Journalism, that's part of their code of ethics. Society of professional journalism, that's part of their code of ethics, is to provide a balanced presentation. But that's not a requirement in order to take and have free speech, it's not a requirement to be a commercial or any other type of news source. There's a lot of news sources out there that you know are going to have a slant, just even from just their name. And they need to be treated equitably. They can't be treated identically, but they do need to be treated fairly, and it has to have not only the substance of fairness, but it also has to give the appearance of fairness. And if you're taking somebody and moving them around because of something that they've always been doing, but you don't agree with, that gives an appearance that's wrong and bad, and that's what we don't want to have. Treat all the news sources fairly, equitably, and don't make it look like you're trying to get back at them because you don't like something they're doing. Thank you.
And that was my motion, that the city not be involved in determining who does, does not receive press releases by a title that we've chosen to classify them as. Is that better?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further counsel comment? Any further public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay. So, it's four?
I abstain.
You abstain?
Yeah.
How about you, Rodney? I didn't hear yours.
Because I'm advertised with the persons here, I probably shouldn't abstain also.
An abstention is a positive, according to our...
It's not a positive?
No.
Is in, it is, an abstention is for the motion according to, I'll find it, if...
Again, we're spending a lot of time on this, where really...
I just don't feel we have the right to classify people.
Okay, it's a nay for me.
Okay.
I'm not going to abstain then.
Okay, we've got two, two for and two against, so no decision has been made. Bring it back. All righty, consideration of possible actions discussed in executive, we have one. Atmost Energy has asked for a rate increase. They have asked for a rate increase to amount to $22.7 million. There is a group of cities, there are 60 cities, that are, that are grouped together that go and negotiate with Atmost, and they have negotiated this down to $16.6 million of an increase. This would amount to a 70, to average 74 cents per residential customer per month, 216 per commercial account per month. Our consultants on this told us that if this, if we want to fight this, we can, but if it goes to the Railroad Commission, we probably will not win, and we'll be out a lot of money to fight it. And they suggested that we take the $16.6 million that has been negotiated, and I guess I'm going to move that we accept the, the tri, the 60 cities areas and the negotiation of $16.6 million for Atmost against their $22.7 million request, which would amount to a 74% residential...
74 cents.
What did I say? 74 cents. 74 cents, average residential increase, 216 average commercial increase, and accept the negotiations of the group. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Do we have further counsel discussion? Do we have public discussion? The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That ends that one. Announcements and considerations of future agenda items?
It was a resolution, Mayor, so we're adopting the resolution.
We adopted, do I need to rephrase my motion to adopt the resolution?
You could just add an addendum to your motion.
Okay, I may, I will add an addendum that we adopt the resolution that goes with those figures. Will you second it?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Announcements, consideration of future agenda items. What do y'all have?
I'm awaiting a lawyer.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'm waiting.
Waiting to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is over.
Bye.